Good evening and welcome to the March 21st, 2016 Select Board -- Select Board Meeting? Town meetings couple of months. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope the introduction is not an indication of how this meeting's going to go, but we'll let you know at 11 o'clock. Any announcements by the Select Board members? Go ahead, Mark.
I have two announcements. First announcement is I want to congratulate the Long Meadow High School girls' basketball team on winning the state championship. It was the first time they've done that, and I think it's a well-deserved congratulations, and they've had a great season. I think we should all be very, very proud of them. Second announcement, I just want to repeat something I had said at an off-meeting about the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority is looking for somebody from the town of Long Meadow to represent paratransit ADA members on their Board of Directors. It's an appointment for two years, I believe, and if anybody's interested, please either call the town office, the Select Board's office, or call Amy Saad at the Adult Center. We are -- it's term for somebody from the town of Long Meadow to fill this position. I'd very much like to have somebody from Long Meadow be the representative for ADA and paratransit on the PVTA's board. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Alex?
Yes, I'd like to echo the point about the basketball game. I was there, and I've got to say that was my first time this year that I've seen the game, and it was absolutely exciting. It was not nail-biter. It was halftime, and they were tied, and then the girls were down eight points, and then they finished off with a 15-2 run to really clinch it. So it had my girls and some other girls dreaming about the day that they'll -- they're fourth graders now -- be competing for the states. So, well done.
Good. Tom?
No.
Just ditto, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, when they get to speak first, everything you say thereafter, just to repeat. Okay, how about resident comments?
I had an announcement.
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. Well, you can come on up, sir. Come on up and take your -- or which chart was coming up first? Stephen, go ahead.
I just -- the -- if those who drove by today noticed, the high school tennis season has started, and we are beginning their practices on our new tennis courts, which opened sort of soft opening today. They will be open for public use. There will be a grand reopening celebration in April, the 19th, Jim?
When is it?
April 30th. So, a grand opening -- grand reopening celebration on April 30th, but we have them opened up. They look great. We hope people will observe all the rules and regulations. We did get reports that there were some folks, younger people, maybe not respecting the rules of the court, and we hope not to see that again because it's a, you know, a big investment the town's made, so we hope people will treat them with respect and enjoy them.
The rules are posted, aren't they, on the tents?
The rules are posted.
Okay, good. On resident comments, we start with you. Give us your name and your address for the clerk's purpose.
My name is Walter Lammon, L-A-M-O-N, 74 West Road, Long Meadow.
Go ahead, sir.
It's come to my attention that the town meeting contains the voting that we're going to do on May 10th contains three articles, Article 26, Article 27, and Article 28, and they were generated by citizens petitions. I'd like to understand where we can see those citizens petitions. Would that be the town hall?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can go view them during normal working hours?
Yes, absolutely.
Also, I'd like to clarify, the petitions, especially number one, that discusses where, you know, firearms can be carried, that would come under the zoning. Is that correct?
I can't answer that. I can't answer.
Well, it would be a zoning question because, you know, what you can do where. The second article, Article 27, talks about the submission for renewal to the license to carry would require that the individual present a detailed inventory of all firearms owned. The question that comes up now to me is, who's going to pay for this? That information is currently collected and maintained by the State of Massachusetts and is available to the Long Meadow Police Department. Now, this would require that that information be contained in town, and it's going to have to be collected and maintained, so that involves additional cost to the town of Long Meadow. So, I believe I'm correct in that understanding. Citizen petition number 28 basically says to vote to accept bylaws for an assault weapon ban throughout the town, which is not currently in place in the state or in the town. Again, that would be zoning as well. That limits places within the town. It's my understanding that because of what I believe to be those categories, that it will require a two-thirds majority vote at the time of the town meeting to pass these citizens petitions or these articles.
Can I interrupt you just for a brief second?
Sure.
And it's for the benefit of those listening at home. Citizens petitions, they're not debated by this board. A citizen's petition goes directly on the warrant.
Understood.
If it's submitted legally, and then what we'll do after we vote the warrant tonight, we'll send it to our legal team, and they will take a look at every article on there to see if, in fact, they are legal, and as the outcome gets closer and closer, then the moderator also will be looking at the entire warrant. But what I think we need to let everybody know is that the Select Board themselves have nothing to do with these petitions because there are citizens' right that can produce these. We can't debate them, and we can't prevent them from being put on the warrant. It's automatic pass through.
Understood. I'm just trying to clarify what they are or where they fall.
Yeah, see, we've not had any discussion on these individually because that's -- we let the legal team look at it, and then it goes right to the town floor for the discussion part.
Okay, how can we keep up on the information as it progresses?
What do you think, Stephen?
I think that you just have to attend town meeting and see what happens with them, you know. I mean, we may get some opinions back from our town council about, you know, legal issues, but by and large, the town warrant will be, you know, sent to the printers and distributed, so we would probably discuss that on the floor of town meeting.
Understood. How would we handle the, you know, what category they fall into, a simple majority, two-thirds majority?
Go ahead, Ray.
There's usually a meeting just before the town meeting. The Select Board has the town moderator and attorney, and they go through how the meeting, town meeting will proceed, and often at that point in time, the attorney and the moderator will mark if it's a two-thirds vote required. So, if you listen to that Select Board meeting, which should be just before the town meeting, you might get a better idea of what the attorney's and moderator belief is on whether a two-thirds are required.
Does that mean same day, or the one, whatever one is previous?
Generally, the Monday before the Tuesday meeting.
So, it'd either be the meeting just before, or the, depending on the chair, could be the week before.
Yeah, it could be the week. We'll see how it runs out.
So, that would either be the eighth, Monday, the eighth, and then the 10th is a Wednesday, I believe, isn't it?
Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay.
Yeah, it depends on Tuesday.
We have a regularly scheduled meeting on the first.
On the ninth, then?
And often, but not yet, have we scheduled a meeting the day before the town meeting.
So, it might be the first.
It might be the first.
Could be either the first or the ninth. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. It just, because I don't want to, I don't want to be coy with you. I'm the lead petitioner on those.
You're the petitioner on those?
I am.
I see.
But this is not, as Richard said, this is not a Select Board article.
Right, so it wouldn't be a conflict. It would not be a conflict, then?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you mean by conflict, but I mean, there's no--
Well, I assume you're on the board.
Well, I am on the board, yes.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to let you know. I'm looking forward to a nice debate on these issues, and I think, you know, as long as we're all respectful, and I think, you know, it's going to be valuable for our democracy to discuss this.
I understand what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other resident comments? Name, rank, and serial number.
Absolutely. Janet Robinson, 57, Canterbury Lane. As Chair of the School Committee at the meetings that you had held last week and at the open forum, I had stated that I would come back to let you know about the school committee's meeting to discuss the compromised offer that was put forth, I believe, last Wednesday. I did attempt that evening to call a meeting for this evening and was not able to get consensus to have that, and in the meantime, I have also tried to call a meeting for Wednesday or Thursday of this week, which does not look like that is feasible either. So, the discussion about the compromised offer on the budget will be placed on our agenda for our regularly scheduled meeting on March 28th.
March 28th, okay. And I think you had asked what the deadlines were on the printing of the warrant, and I sent those to you out of our schedule book.
You did.
The fourth is we send it to the printer, and what is the final date? Do you have it, Stephen? Do you remember what the final was, about a week or--
A week later, I believe.
To go to the printer.
Yeah, well, we take, we send it to the printer on the fourth, and then we do a final review here and send it back for final distribution, I think, about a week later.
No, that'd be too late, Richard.
Say something.
Sure.
Yeah. Janet, I just wondered if the superintendent and if Tom Mazza had a chance to respond to this, and if they had any information for the board regarding looking at the numbers again, or is that just--
No, they were part of the email of the group of trying to gather a meeting together, so they have not received -- we have not received any further feedback from them.
All right.
Okay?
Okay, I understand that Tom Mazza was not able to meet, and that's--
This evening, correct.
One of the primary reasons why your board is not meeting, because you have a quorum right now.
Correct.
So, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, any other questions?
Sir.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Any other resident comments? Seeing no resident comments, we'll move on to Select Board comments. Quiet bunch tonight, okay?
We're talked out, Richard.
I guess we're all talked out.
Twelve meetings in 12 days.
Yeah, yeah, 12 meetings in 12 days. Town manager, report.
I think I'm talked out.
You're going to do a one-liner on us, too?
So, you have the monthly reports in front of you. I would note that asphalt plants are going to be opening up, I think, this week, and so you'll see our guys out there doing some pothole repairs. If you see potholes, we posted this on our Facebook page today, some tips for pothole driving, pothole season driving, and if you see one, take a picture of it and send it in with your phone through your gov, an app that's available for download also from our website if you don't have it already, and -- or you can call 567-3400. I did mention the tennis courts open. Our grounds division's also going to be working diligently to make sure that the playing fields are all ready for spring sports, and that's about it for now, I mean.
Based on the weather, you guys are going to really be pressured into getting everything ready this year.
Well, it's supposed to rain all of this week, and it's not so much the cold. It's when the fields are damp.
Right.
You really don't want, if you're bringing equipment on them to try and prep them and making ruts and everything else, you know, because of the mud.
Right.
Yeah, you have to give them some dry time.
Yeah, because we could use, actually, hate to say it, we use a little snow and ice to slow this thing down a little bit, but you will be pressed, I'm sure, and if it continues warm, you're going to be pressed on your horticultural program, on mowing, getting it under--
Well, last year, there was, what, two feet of snow on the ground still at this time of year, so I mean, I think we're ahead of there.
Yeah, it's a whole new year, so. I wish you luck. Mario, I wish you luck on this year's program.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mary?
Oh, I had a question. The report, one of the things you talked about was the complete streets funding program and how you're putting together a prioritization plan, but what I'd be also interested in is finding out if we could have some raw statistics, like not just how many sidewalks we did, but how many new sidewalks, and so that could be broken down, and how many feet or else miles of bike paths, so that we can just sort of measure every year as we're going along and how we're progressing. So, I could see we prioritize it, but it'd be interesting to also see the statistics and the numbers going forward.
One of the things that we're doing, we haven't done a lot of reporting from it, but we have been collecting a lot of data in Cartograph, and so I do think we'll be able to collect that data, and when we develop better proficiency with our reporting with the system, we'll be able to illustrate those developments. We are also working on an updated, you know, annually, I give the board an update of the capital plan, you know, the kind of slideshow with pictures and everything else, and so we are in the process of preparing that to show the accomplishments from the past year as well, so.
And that will be, did you say March? Is that realistic? It's going to be done in March?
It's going to be done in March.
You mentioned the work was planned for March to get the, develop a complete streets plan.
I think so. I mean, it, the plan is, you know, I don't think it's that huge document. I mean, a lot of the, I think a lot of the plan is the components we've already done and things we've already developed, so I think it'll be, I have no reason to believe it won't be.
And one last question. Does that include the marking of crosswalks? Is that part of the plan, since it's a--
In terms of prioritization?
No, just the initial statistics that we will have, how many sidewalks we have and things like that, because that's why I'm hoping that we'll have a baseline, so every year we can measure it against the baseline. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, that reminded me. Oh, we received also preliminary pre-designation that we are, our Tree City USA designation has been renewed. The tree director, Mario Mazza, and tree warden, deputy director Jeff McGallman have been good about submitting the required information for that, so we expect to receive that designation again.
Good. Anything else, Stephen? Any questions for Stephen?
On the Green Communities grant, you were planning to submit some options to us to re-designate that money. I mean, where does that stand?
Well, it's kind of set on hold while we've been kind of going through the budget process. One of the options that I was looking strongly at was energy efficiency improvements for the proposed DPW facility. Now that we have a committee, they've kind of turned back the clock a little bit in terms of the siting conversation, so when we get through that conversation and turn more towards the facility itself and a site has been selected, then I think we'll, that's a good place to bring the energy efficiency discussion back in for that project, because I do think that's a, it's a large energy consumer, the Public Works building, and even a new one would be, and I had a conversation a few weeks ago with Eversource, and they actually have funding as well to help offset the cost of energy efficiency improvements. In fact, they will fund a design charrette, in effect, for a project like that, so that's one of the options I want to present, but the DPW project itself is kind of set back a little, or from a timing standpoint, is back from where I initially said I was going to do that, so when it catches back up to where we were before, I think we'll probably bring that back out.
No. I mean, one of the problems is that we missed out on the opportunity last September, I think it was, to apply again, because we hadn't used the money that we had gotten two years ago. I mean, and sort of making the energy program contingent upon the DPW facility kind of run into the problem that we have with the streetlights. It's sort of this unknown out there, and it could be that we go another year of missing out on the opportunity to get that grant. I mean, is there any way that we could get some more definite possibilities so we can use that grant money and, you know, kind of get our fair share at least this year?
For what?
Well, I mean, this is what I'm asking you--
Right.
--the expert in town government to propose.
Yes. That's correct. Not, it's not correct that I'm an expert in town government, but it is to get the next round of, you don't really miss an opportunity if you don't have something to apply for, and right now, where we stand is the grant we have in hand that I have received every assurance from the Green Communities Office that we're not going to lose, is for largely planning, and once you plan your program that you're going to implement, you apply for the next round of funding to fund that program. That's where we hit the, we kind of hit the wall with the streetlights, and so now this next program is the thing we're developing, so it's, we don't miss an opportunity to apply for new money because we don't have anything to really apply for. The thing, if you go back to the original conversation on the Green Communities grant, we have an energy reduction program with certain goals, and that's what they look at, and one of the goals is reducing consumption in our facilities. Now, we're fortunate that over the years, the town has really, town has really invested a lot of money in energy efficiency. I mean, the building we're sitting in right now is a remarkably efficient building compared to the one it replaced. So, there aren't a lot of, there's a lot of little things you can do, but what they look for is the kind of big payback, the big return on investment in terms of reduction of consumption or reduction of cost, and we don't have a lot of big ones that we can go for in a new building, especially a new public works facility, would be a really high payback for reduction of consumption, so we don't want to lose the opportunity to get that really high rate of return. That is something that the next round of grant funding that the Green Communities Office would look at favorably, because we're proposing something that would really reduce our consumption. So, I guess my approach is go for the right project versus the right now project, and right now, we don't have, we don't really have something that really offers that big benefit. I mean, if you guys recall, when we looked at the options back and when we decided to do the streetlights, it was streetlights and then everything else a distant second. It really wasn't--
Well, no, we had the middle school boilers, which actually would have paid back, which would have saved more energy than even the streetlights, and then, but there was an argue, oh, I remember this, I added it up. So, we could, I just didn't realize until you're just telling me this now, that the projects that we could spend the Green Communities' money on are so scarce, which I guess kind of goes to maybe how useful this Green Communities' grant is. If we don't have any projects for them to approve, I thought we had tons of ways to spend that money, but I guess you're saying no.
I think we, like I said, there's a lot of little things you can do, but the middle school boilers, the return in terms of cost savings, you know, you spend that, whatever it is, $200,000 or $300,000 on boilers, it does lower the cost of utilities for that building, but it doesn't, it's hard to recapitalize a fund there, especially since, you know, you'd have to ask the school committee for the money if it's a school building, because they pay their own utilities, and--
Well, but it's all, we're all one town, right?
I've heard something about that.
Yeah, I think we've been talking about that.
So, but these are all things we've talked about before.
Right.
But I truly think that, and based on the conversation I had with the Green Communities, it was the Green Communities Office that set up the call with Eversource, and I was very in-- Communities Office that set up the call with Eversource, and I was very encouraged by the results of that conversation, that it really feels like a very beneficial project that will not only potentially lower the upfront cost of the development, but also the annual operating costs of the facility, in a much more meaningful way than just swapping out boilers would. And I don't remember specifically what, I don't know what, you remember? But the streetlights are a huge energy consumer. The streetlights would save significantly more, significantly more money for sure by converting an LED than any boiler project we come up with.
Well, actually, what the information you submitted to us actually have the units of energy, and actually, there were more units of energy saved with the boilers, but anyway, we're past that, we've spent our own money on the boilers, so we can't do that again, I'm just looking for something else.
Marie?
Can we just have it on the future agenda, maybe in May, when we, because I think it's worth it to look at and discuss it further.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of ongoing pieces on it.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Stephen? Tom, nothing? Okay.
Richard, can I just move to add an item to the agenda?
Sure.
That we got a one-day liquor license application today that came in the office, and if we don't deal with it tonight, the date's going to come and go, so I'd like to add to the new business agenda the consideration for a one-day liquor license when it comes to the...
Yeah, yeah, we were going to add it there, thank you. We don't think we need a motion, so if we got it in hand, we'll just put it out. Let's see, any other questions for Stephen? Okay, easy evening, Stephen. Take a motion for approval of March 4 minutes?
I move we approve the March 4, 2016 minutes of the special select board meeting.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay.
I had a few typos I forwarded to Debbie, and they're not in any way a change of angle, but literally spell check typos, I'd like to address this.
Okay, so we'll vote on as per the changes you made and gave to her.
Right.
Okay.
If somebody wants to go over them, I will, but I don't think they're necessary.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. Motion for the March 7?
I move we approve the March 7, 2016 regular meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board.
Second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Similarly, I think there was one or two things in that one, Debbie, right?
So amendments as indicated already? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No abstention. Motion for the 9?
I move we approve the March 9, 2016 minutes of the special select board meeting.
I'll second it. Any discussion on the March 9? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Well, actually, I'm sorry, that was actually one that I had a change on.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Alex.
I believe this was the, I'm sorry. This was, okay, there was a discussion about parks and rec, and there was a talk about coding, and I think it says Mr. Grant was not in favor of coding, and I'm not being critical, Debbie, but that's, because I did say something like that, I think...
Not a big fan.
Well, no, no, I just said that I would prefer, you know, outdoors activities, so if we could, I would say, Mr. Grant said he favored outdoors activity rather than coding for camps.
Okay, any other changes, Alex?
...
Coding camps.
Coding camps.
Because I think we were talking about camps at the time.
Any other, any other changes?
No, you're, no.
Okay, so approval of the minutes as amended, all in favor? All opposed?
I move we approve the March 14, 2016 special select board meeting minutes. Second?
Second, by Tom. Any discussion on the March 14 minutes? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed?
I abstain.
One abstention.
Move we approve the March 16, 2016 special select board meeting minutes, this is getting a...
It is.
A lot of meetings.
We had a second, I was going to say the same thing. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I move we approve the March 17, 2016 select board, but they were distributed in our packet.
Oh, okay.
The minutes of the 2000, March 17, 2016 minutes.
Right.
The special meeting.
I'll second it. Any discussion on the 17th minutes? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? All opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention? Okay, yes, ladies and gentlemen, that's meeting on the 4th, the 7th, the 9th, the 14th, 16th, and 17th. Stop and think about that for...
I do want to, I want to commend Debbie for the work she's done on the minutes, and spent a lot of hours having her listen to us, so that can't be good.
And she's still hanging with us.
And they're so timely, brought back, that's amazing, thank you.
That's a pleasure, we have not experienced that often on the board. Okay, next item, this appointment of the registrar. There was, just for general information, and only general information, folks, not an opinion, the last time we appointed registrar, apparently there was, at that point, there was two Democrats, or two Democrats and one Republican, and there was something that snarled up, and we apparently didn't get a recommendation for a Democrat, so they changed it over, and presently, we're set with two Republicans and one Democrat, and just for demographic balance, I checked with the clerk, Democratic committee has 3,494 registered voters in town, and Republican committee has 2,279, so just as an information, I don't know if you want to keep the order the way it is now, or if you want to consider changing the order, so.
One of the things I was thinking, Richard, in this regard, is because the law requires that there be no more than two people from either of the main parties on this, but we've always tried, because we have three registrars, tried to keep it two to one, I was just thinking we alternate, that if it's a Republican up for, you know, whose term is expiring, we appoint a Democrat, and if it's a Democrat whose term is expiring, we appoint a Republican, and that way, there'll always be the same, you know, it'll always be two to one, and it will flip-flop, two Democrats or two Republicans, and because of that, I, you know, I was going to make a motion on an appointment here, but I just wanted to make sure there was no, nobody thought differently from taking that approach.
Yeah, and I think, I think we need a discussion before we take a motion too, in case there's another feeling. Marie, do you have any feelings on this issue?
No, I understood I should probably abstain, so I'm not going to be part of the discussion.
That's nonsense.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. Tom, do you have any feelings?
Well, I think that's a good point.
I mean, on this issue, I know you have feelings.
Well, no, but, you know, but the, yeah, alternating, you know, Republican leaves, putting in a Democrat, and then vice versa, I think that's a good plan, I mean, you know, every now and then, we will get someone who's an independent, but I don't think that should create too much difficulty for us.
Actually, we won't, because the system requires that the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee submit names, it doesn't allow for unenrolled people to get their names submitted.
Okay.
That's the system.
I guess the town clerk is an independent.
The clerk is independent.
I think the clerk is independent.
She represents the independents.
Represents that other side. Alex, you have any comments?
That's fine, I mean, anything that makes it, you know, appear unbiased, I think is good.
Okay, okay, then, Mark, you want to make a motion?
With that in mind, I move that we nominate Emmanuel Winnig to the position of registrar to fill the expiring seat.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion on the issue? Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
And Marie abstained.
And Marie abstained. Okay, let's see, registrar, the next one up is sewer contract summary. Pete, why don't you come up and answer this question? You going to lead the discussion?
Sure.
Okay. Along with Pete and Mario, excuse me, Mario, I forgot you're, I didn't forget you were here, but...
Don't worry.
Okay.
So, at the last discussion, some follow-up documentation was requested by the board to put the sewer contract in context, and to see what changes had evolved during the course of the negotiations with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. We did include that in your packet, there's a memo from Mario and Pete that kind of explains the minor changes and significant changes, they included the map of the houses that we've talked about that are, should be our customers, they're served by us, but they've been Springfield customers, is that?
Sure.
Yeah, so trying to make sure that those end up going into, that we can benefit of that billing, and so that's one of the things that we are working to change in the document. We fully expect that we will, that that will be worked out, but we do need to have the document, the contract finalized and approved for the commission's benefit, really now, I think, is we're right up against the timeline.
Just a quick update on those, those border counts on the three houses, I had a discussion with Springfield Water and Sewer today, and there are three homes that are in Long Meadow, on Long Meadow Sewer, and we are trying to address them now, along Springfield agrees, to similar places that we have on Dwight, where there are Long Meadow homes, it's Long Meadow Sewer or businesses, Springfield builds them for water, they give us the readings, and we build those residents for sewer, and it should be the same exact thing, just for those three houses. We think we've cleared up the water issue on them, but on the sewer, it should just be three homes in the area.
But beside, and day-to-day, for those handful of properties, it's important to clarify that, but I think that by and large, the big picture for the contract, again, we started to discuss, is Springfield had initially proposed each town paying a share, a pro-rata share of capital improvements, and really, the original proposal was, they looked at all of the assets, including river crossings, you know, the northern end of Springfield that collects waste from, you know, East Long Meadow, Wolverham, and other communities, and Indian Orchard Pump Station, and they were going to look at all of the, and Bondi's Island, and look at it all as kind of one big system, and then whatever capital improvements they made, every town was going to have a pro-rata share, and the ratio is really based on flow, on the amount of discharge or flow you put into the system. When we looked at that, we thought, you know, the original contract from the 1970s had made it clear that you don't pay for what you don't flow into, even on a capital basis, and so we pushed back and said, you know, we understand that the whole thing is a system, but, you know, we are not contributing anything to, you know, Indian Orchard or those northern river crossings, and if you're going to look at the whole thing as a system, then our river crossing that we own, that the town of Long Meadow exclusively owns, should be a part of the system as well, and if anything ever happens to it, then all these other towns should pay for that too, if we're going to stand by that principle. Naturally, they didn't really, the value of the principle broke down, we put it in those terms, and so they did yield on the point of the capital improvements, we said we, you know, we were obligated to pay our fair share of things we use, and we're not contesting that, so they made, they agreed with us, and had, changed the document accordingly, and that's spelled out here in the memo. I did distribute a redline version, I don't think it's in my version of the packet, but we did send it out, so, you know, I think the big thing is, you know, I give the commission credit, I mean, the bottom line is, we don't have a lot of alternatives to where we're going to have our wastewater treated.
Right.
So I give them credit for working with us and agreeing to our point of view on several of these things, even though at the end of the day, we're not, we're not going to be able to switch, you know, in an easy way, so it is, it has been a, I don't know, coming up on probably 50-year relationship, it started back in the 70s, that first contract thing was the mid 70s.
Probably even later than that.
So, anyway, 40 years anyway, that the town of Long Meadow's been working with, was the city of Springfield, now it's the commission, and this takes us to the next six years. In terms of the six-year term, there's a, that's really tied to the private contract, that Bondi's Island is operated by virtue of a private contract, so it's not municipal employees, it's run by a contractor, and that, that contractor manages that facility comes up around that same time as well, right? So, I don't know if I left anything else that you guys want to talk about, or any questions from the board?
It sounds like, I had an in-law that lived at the end of a road, and so, you know, what they did is, the further down you lived on the road, the more you had to pay for road repair, because you drove that much further, and it kind of sounds like this, you know, luckily, we're just going to pay for the bar of the road, the underground sewer system that we're using, and I'm glad we're not further out of town, because if we had more river crossings, we'd be paying more, right? That's basically what they're saying, so.
Right.
I have a concern, though, because, so our sewer line that's going under the river is just ours, it's not part of the full system, it's been carved out, and so there's no planning for the capital...
I wouldn't say it's carved out, it has never been in the system.
Never been in the system, so that's out, and I understood that's a $20 million project, and that's, when are we going to have to look at getting that done, and we won't get any help from anyone else, so it's something that we should be setting aside more than a fire truck or anything else. When is that going to come up?
I think that's like a 50-year thing, though.
Yeah, but it's been like already 30 years.
No, I think it's 50 more years.
50 more years? Well...
I don't have that answer to you.
Do you know?
As far as, I mean, Tianbon did look at the, our river crossing, you know, and they did give it, you know, a longer, you know, life expectancy on the sewer main, I can't give you the figure right now, but it is on the report, they looked at it, probably something we should look at in the next 20 years, as far as either doing a redundant, because it's a major, major project, I mean, right now, we do know that, you said 20 million, Springfield, that's one of the river crossings that they're looking at, and it's more like a $50 million project.
Wow, so even for redundancy, you're talking possibly 50 million, maybe in 20 years, we have to start looking at that.
So, one of the things we talked to them about, before we sound the alarm bell on this unnecessarily, is as a part of their capital planning, and they're looking at their river crossings, is there an opportunity to create a connection, a direct connection from our pump station on this side of the river to their crossing, so to create that redundancy that we talked about, which would probably be far less than the, than doing a whole new one for ourselves. So we are engaged in that discussion with them as they go through planning, we may be required to make a contribution, perhaps to the design process there, if it requires extra work on their part, but I think we agree that it's, we talked about it, when they proposed that they were going to be doing those river, additional river crossings, I think on the ride home, we were like, we really ought to make sure we look into some kind of ability to connect to that new river crossing at a future date if needed.
So when would these discussions, would they be in the next six months, or are you talking the next year, where we might need to put in design money?
They're right now, I would say within the next, the next year, they're at a design part of the, like, we're crossing now, I mean, it's a $5 million design that they're looking at, because they have to give us those estimates, you know, for O&M operating costs, you know, for future, for our sewer rates, you know, going forward, but, you know, part of this discussion was, you know, renewing the contract, and then having more talks with them on that, but, you know, that is option, something we should look at in the next year, to see, just to see how much it is, and what it would cost in, you know, detail if it can even be done, because it is along, you know, it is along the tracks, the railroad tracks that are there, but...
Exactly, along the tracks, along the river, all the way to the north.
We do have a line, right, we haven't even seen their designs yet, as far as what they're doing on the new river crossing.
Do you think you'd have an update in six months, like in July, on how things are going with that?
Yeah, I would assume, we can, we can talk to them, and talk to them fairly regularly on different projects, water and sewer, just, you know, upcoming that's going to affect our rates in the future, so that could be what we can bring up.
Yeah, just a quick comment, so that people at home understand what we're talking about, is our contract with Bondi's Island, as we call it here, and our budget for the next fiscal year is $578,000, which is up 6.4%, so this is a significant part of the expenses of the town of Long Meadow, not to mention a pretty significant utility that we need in town, and I guess my only question is, how did we, how did the term of this contract, which I understand is six years, get developed at six years, and how did the escalators within that get determined?
Well, the six-year thing is tied to the management contract.
So it is what their, the management is for Bondi's Island.
Yeah, and it's, and a lot of the stuff, a lot of the language is boilerplate for all communities, there's...
Every, every community, it's a, it's a six-year.
Yeah, it's a six-year for every community, and in terms of the escalators and some of that stuff, they have standard contract language, we did have our town council approve it, he did approve it, he had a few questions that he raised directly with the attorney for the commission.
Is this Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Okay.
And so he did go through, I have email correspondence, that fact, I don't know if I forwarded it or not, but I did have email correspondence with him, where he followed up with the attorney, the commission, and got his questions satisfied, the attorney, the commission's attorney said, this is kind of the boilerplate language for everyone, and we didn't feel like, and it was extremely detrimental, it really is similar in many ways to the, especially if you look at the redline version, most of it's similar to the agreements we've had in place for... most of it's similar to the agreements we've had in place for a long time.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had. So the red line is comparing what and what?
So the very first one we gave you was 2006. That was agreed upon.
Okay.
The red line is the first, I believe it was the first update from the 2006. So it's a draft.
Okay. So does the red line compare the 2006 final agreement to the current agreement that we're voting on?
It's the middle step. It was the middle draft.
The middle draft.
The first draft we received.
Right.
Last year. Right?
Okay. So is there anything that compares the old contract with what we're voting on?
Yes, there is a final.
I get that, but I mean, is there a red line that compares?
Oh, the 2006?
To what we're actually voting on?
Uh, not that I'm aware. I thought that the.
I think they were just, for the most part, just accepted the red lines in the final version. I can't think of anything that's that different.
No, he's saying from the 2006 version of this. And I thought we had received something like that. I actually thought it was very, I thought the 2000, the version we received last year, I thought was very similar to the 2006 version. But I don't know that we got a red line version of that.
The original 2006, we received a red line in November, when we initially went to the meeting and brought up the discussion.
I thought that went on, I thought that went on.
That we, that we brought up the discussion.
I thought one of them was a red line 2006 version.
And I.
No.
No.
The red line was what Pete said from the fall.
Oh, it just was the original version, not a red line version.
No.
Okay. We can, we can send that out.
Well, I mean, it'd be nice to look at it before we actually vote on it. You know, it kind of makes me feel a little uneasy. Could you tell us what the issues the attorney discussed with the commission?
Yeah. One second. So he had raised the issue of the reporting requirements and the frequency of the little detail. The attorney said that's not really within the scope. That's really something that our team works on with the engineering side with the commission. And we are fine with the reporting requirements. We have reporting requirements today.
Okay.
He raised a six-year term. And that's where we get the answer about the, you know, the six years is tied to the renewal of the management contract, the operating contract. We also, again, detailed flow calculations. Again, that was one that the attorney deferred to the technical side, which he just covered for us. And then the termination of agreement for 120-day cure period and the timing of that. And what he said was, the two issues that come up that could trigger that, that don't really apply are industrial facilities that don't pre-treat. A lot of industrial facilities pre-treat their effluent before they discharge into the system. And non-payment. So we haven't had a problem with that. And then non-arbitration, and then said the parties will go to court if the non-binding arbitration doesn't reach a resolution. So I can forward this to the board. I thought, actually, just without a head.
Okay. So in the memo that you all prepared, explaining the contract, there's this issue, which you just referred to, of these houses that they're getting the money for instead of us.
Right.
That's not entirely true. We do get a true-up at the end of the year. We are getting a percentage.
They do the billing.
They do the billing. We get a percentage. That was in the original contract also, on the renewal.
Okay, but.
There's like 35 homes. The issue is, there's three homes right now that we're getting a percentage of the sewer.
Yeah.
But the sewer is actually in Long Meadow. The three homes are in Long Meadow. So what we are requesting is that we, Springfield bills for water 100%.
Right.
We bill for sewer 100%, like Springfield's reading on their meters.
Okay.
Just like we do this, just like on Dwight's.
So I guess my question is, why wouldn't we include that in the agreement?
Springfield, it's a very small number. When you look at the whole agreement, it's very small. We have up to two years to make any changes under this contract. So for three homes, and you're really talking pennies per year, we didn't want to hold it up for three homes. We've been moving along, you know, readily moving along on these three homes. And, I mean, we're very close by the time.
You think you can solve it?
Yeah, I think probably by the time we can do that, I mean, we're that close. I actually have an email out, and I hopefully get an answer back this week where we can settle it.
I mean, I guess, this is sort of more in the way of comment than question. I mean, you know, getting a red line of the last contract to what we're actually voting on is kind of what I was looking for when I asked for it, when we discussed this before. It's a pretty simple thing to do in Word, even I can manage that. So it just, I'm not comfortable voting on it like this. So I just don't understand why we don't have that.
I would just comment that I don't think there's another version to give you. So we gave you the 2006, which was approved.
Right.
Back then.
Right.
This is the update with the red line. And then the only other document that's available is the accepted red lines that you guys are going to vote on.
The last contract was a 10-year contract.
I believe you're right.
Correct, yes.
So I guess I'm not following that, because I thought you said that.
Let me back up one second.
The red line version.
How many did we send them? Three?
We sent them three.
The same ones I gave you?
Yeah, whatever you guys sent, we put it right in the packet.
So you have 2006, right?
The original, 2006 in the packet.
Then you have this draft one I called.
And that's got the red lines on it.
The red lines.
Okay, that's, but that was as of last summer?
This was of the fall, I think.
That one was actually February of 2016.
Okay. That could be.
Okay.
And then you have the final.
All right, that's why I was asking. What is the red line compare? What to what?
It takes, I think, 2006 adds any additions that were agreed upon, takes out any deletions, a lot like the river crossing, Indian Orchard, handful of other smaller updates, dates, names, things like that.
What it has is in your, in our memo, those are the changes from the original 10-year 2006.
Right, I get that.
Which expired to the red line, which is the one that you received.
So does the red line show all of the changes of, up to what we're about to vote on?
Yes.
Yes. There's nothing else that's been changed. I think the difference between what you have and the final are just those being accepted. You know, like when you're in Word and you accept it, it goes from red to black. And that's it.
All right. Okay, all right, I guess I misunderstood. Okay, thank you.
I probably didn't explain it clearly.
No, that's.
There you did.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the contract with the Springfield, I think it's the Water and Sewer Commission, is that?
It's not the city anymore, it's the commission.
It's the commission, right. The Water and Sewer, it's called the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission.
Correct.
Yeah. For renewal of six-year contract beginning in 2016, as presented.
Do a second.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah. I have a question about Article 2.1. In the, in this one, it says that Springfield will accept, dispose of all the town's wastewater and amounts that are set forth in Article 4. But in the original contract, it seemed like, in the 2005, 2006 contract, it looked like, and I'm trying to get the wording up, and I can't, but it said that, it didn't seem like there was limits. I mean, am I correct in that? Or did I?
So you're referring to, are you talking about the final draft contract that's not red lined?
Well, the, yeah, the final draft contract, I believe, says that it'll, you know, Article 4 determines how much of a flow. But in the original, the contact from 10 years ago.
Six.
I get a sense that they would just take whatever we, you know, they would take all of our town's wastewater. I didn't see a limit. I don't, and so I'm, you know, if, like Marie was saying, if we decide to make a change and we're not going to divert to our own pipe going under the river, and we connect to the cities, I want to know that they're going to take all of our wastewater, that they're not going to say, well, we only have an agreement up to this amount at this point in time, and.
Tom, if I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
The flow rates, the, you'll see the things like BODs, suspended solids.
Yeah.
All of that is tied to figuring out what our share of the whole pie, the whole, what our share of the contributions to the, to the system are, meaning payment. So the amount we owe, like our rates are tied to the pro rata, the percentage, and it's based on flow and the type of, and the severity of the waste that we have.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not a cap on how much we can put in. It's just, if our flow goes up, then our price goes up.
Okay. And so I wish, this might, it's not responding to this, but if we looked at.
The numbers are slightly up.
Okay. Could you read the difference it would be?
They, yes.
So the average daily flow in 2006 was 3.0, and the proposed is 2.8. Peak flow rate, 7.8 in 2006, 7.4 in the proposed. BODs, 3,900 pounds a day in 2006, 3,700 a day in the proposed. TSS, 4,600 pounds a day in the '06, and 4,300 a day in the proposed.
And those numbers have dropped just from our annual usages.
All right.
So they're actually lower. The percentages are lower because those are our averages over the last 10 years.
All right.
So they've actually dropped.
Okay. So you feel, all right, but let me just look at this. I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
We're waiting on you, Tom.
We're waiting on me.
No pressure, though.
I could ask Richard.
Go ahead, Marie.
While he's doing that, how much are we saving by not doing the capital with the North End Pipe and the Indian Orchard?
Well, probably a fair amount. They haven't even gotten to those projects yet.
Yeah, they'll be tens of millions of dollars.
Future. It's, yes.
And then, piggybacking off of what Tom did, since we've carved it out, if we decide we're going to hook up later, is there something in that contract that sort of prohibits that? Or are we just going to have to rewrite the contract?
We'll have to negotiate.
Renegotiate.
I mean, the discussions that we've had, I think Springfield would, I don't think there would be any reason why they would say no. Obviously, they would know it would definitely help out us long-term future if something should happen with the river crossing in the next 50 years or so. But this is something, it's just planning, something else to look at.
Yeah. The other thing I'll note, Marie, is that in terms of like the, what they're building, and correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the things I learned is, it's a huge expense for us, as Mark said, and it's one of our big, major things we do in terms of our town function and our cost. But I think we're the smallest contributor. Are we the, in terms of the number of towns they have that are a part of this system, we are one of the smallest, lowest amounts of flow, or whatever you want, one of the smallest customers they have.
Right. That's in East Long Meadow.
Yeah. Everyone, you look at.
Percentage-wise, we're just about the same with East Long Meadow, the size of our town.
I mean, are we even 5%, of what they treat annually?
I would have to look at our true-ups, but I think last year, we may have been like 4.8 or something of, of the total 100% between all the communities.
Yeah.
And that fluctuates over the last, looking at some of the numbers, discussing it with Springfield, I think over the last 40 years, I mean, we've probably pretty much been on a plateau of our, of our usage, or I should say, of our waste to Springfield.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, do you have anything else?
No, you're right. You know, look at now. We're all set. Thank you for your explanation.
Any other discussion before we take a vote? So you know, is the session all in favor of acceptance agreement? Aye? All opposed? Okay. By the way, great job, Stephen. Great job to you, too. It sounds like there were some major changes that took place that are benefit of our community. They were good catches, I guess is the best thing. So it was a good overview of the contract, guys. Next week, we'll have an in-depth study on what a BOD 5 is and a TSS for anybody interested at home tuning back in. That's, that's humor, very light humor. Energy Committee.
I did not receive any other input other than Mark at the last meeting, so I made those changes. I put it back in the packet. So I'm looking for acceptance of the description of the Energy Task Force and energy policy. I guess I would put it into two different votes. And so I moved to accept the Energy Task Force as delineated in the packet.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Can't spend a second? Discussion?
Just so I'm clear, you said something about two motions, but I don't know, the way you just said it.
Well, I just said the, no, I just do this, I just do it in two separate pieces. One would be the Energy Task Force establishment, the other is the energy policy that's at the bottom.
So this is for the task force?
Yes.
For the task force. Video discussion?
Yeah.
Mark?
I just like, Marie, the makeup of the committee, I'm still questioning why we have the Transitions Group. I'm not sure who they are and what form or role they have, as opposed to putting a citizen or two on this task force.
And Transitions Group is, they are our citizens group. And the reason I put them in is, I'm trying to avoid the issue we have of joint appointments, where the two boards have to get together and jointly appoint. If you would prefer that we say, a school committee will choose a member of, will appoint a resident, and we will appoint a resident, I don't mind that either. But I don't want us to be sitting here and having to do the joints, because it just doesn't work.
That's a point well taken. I just don't, I mean, I don't know enough about the transitions, not saying they're good, bad, or indifferent, but if they cease to exist, or they don't have a, you know, I don't know, sufficient numbers or whatever it is, you know, it seems to be making a, I think they're an ad hoc group, as a formal member of a town committee seems a little unusual to me, and I'd much rather add in a couple of, yeah, in fact, I don't care who appoints it, if it wants to be the school committee, that's fine, too. I'd just rather see a citizen appointment rather than somebody from that group.
So just say two residents?
Well, right now, it reads, the task force shall include one member of the select board, two members of the school committee, a member of the recycling committee, a member of the transitions group, and a member of the planning committee. That's a, that's six people. So if we just replace the transitions group with two residents, one to be appointed by the select board, one by the school committee, we'll have an odd number and move forward.
Is that a motion?
That's an amendment. I'd move, we amend the task force membership to strike a member of the transition group and add two residents, one to be appointed by the select board, one by the school committee.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
Well, we need to.
Shoot, you may second. I'll second it. Good.
So discussion, I mean, I think prob, I won't speak for why you included it, but I'm guessing why you probably did, because this is actually a group that cares a lot about energy, green policy and that sort of thing. I mean, you know, if you feel strongly about, you know, having two people and having them appointed, I, I think just having somebody from the Transitions Group would kind of get things moving. I mean, I don't think this is going to be a controversial committee.
Let's appoint somebody from the Transitions Group as the Select Board appointee, then. I, I just, I just see the Transitions Group as being an ad hoc committee as opposed to a, a formal, you know, organization. That's all.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? See, no, all in favor? All opposed?
The amendment.
Yeah, the amendment, yeah.
The amendment.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we're back to the primary motion, and that was to accept the Energy Task Force as written, with the exception of the amendment that we just made. Any discussion on it? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Thank you, Marie.
Well, now the Energy Policy.
Oh, that's right, you got the other part. See, you should have put it together.
Oh, you think so? I don't know. I just, I just know they, this micromanage, so just wanted to make it clear. I move that we adopt the Energy Policy as written in the packet.
Can you read that, just because it's a whole sentence?
Sure. "The town of Long Meadow and all departments shall promote energy conservation, the use of diverse energy sources in all town projects. The town shall measure and report energy consumption annually, along with a, with design a conservation energy plan with measurable goals."
Okay.
I'll second it.
It's been seconded? It's been seconded? A discussion?
So, Marie, did you, I mean, you kind of stumbled over, because I'm not quite sure, "along with designing a co," I'm not sure.
Yes, designing.
Designing. Okay.
Good catch, Alex.
Along with design. Okay.
That's grammatically correct now.
Yes. You leave, you just lay crumbs out there.
That's it?
Yeah, I know what you're doing. Any other discussion? See, no, all in favor?
Right.
All opposed? Okay. Good job, Marie.
Well, thank you very much, you guys.
Okay.
And I just have a quick question in regards to this, the energy fund, where's that going in the budget? Is that under Town Manager, Select Board? Have you decided where that's going to go?
I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
That line item?
It's under Select Board.
It's under Select Board.
Oh, it's alright. We did start, yeah. We did start flying, hearing. My bad.
Okay. Now, we have the, the report on the Adult Center. Mary Beth, you want to come on up?
I was, I mean, the pros and cons are in your packet. I would also invite Executive Amy Sada. I was, I don't know if, I was going to kind of present the pros and cons.
Okay.
I'd welcome Mary Beth's input. She was the Chair of the Task Force.
Both of you guys come on up?
I went through all that as well.
Okay.
And Marie was liaison, so I think it'll be kind of a group discussion.
How are we going to use the boards so that people at home, since we have them?
Oh, that's right. I think this is just...
We can.
Put them on your side, or, as you go through and explain it.
Hold them in front of me like this, so no one can see me.
Yes.
Yes. Well, why don't we get through some of the discussion, and then we can, maybe we can ask LCTV if they can, if we maybe turn them the right way, they can zoom in on those boards and see.
They, they are turned the right way. William Street's on the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Right. Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll go down, I'll take them, go on down, they can get a live shot.
So, they're all oriented the same way. So, I didn't know if, if the, if the people in the control room could advise us as to whether or not they, they're visible from where they are.
Well, why don't you start your discussion, and I'll go west.
We're fine? Okay. Okay, we're good.
Out of the box comes the message.
Yes.
I didn't get out of here, did I?
I didn't mean to interrupt his nap.
Yeah.
Nothing?
Yeah, nothing, nothing. So, anyway, I, I think when we discussed this last time, the, as you'd seen in the previous packet, Mary Beth, on behalf of the Task Force, had submitted a letter with the nearly unanimous recommendation of the Task Force to recommend what is called Turner Park Site 1 for the preferred site for a new Adult Center building. If you look at the, if you look at, and that's the one Amy's pointing to right there, the board, as Richard mentioned, the boards are all oriented, so William Street is, runs along the bottom that way width-wise, so if you picture where the ball fields are, are right now, they would be right along the bottom there.
There's the ball fields, in case they can't see it on.
Right. And so, Site 1 has the building and parking on this side of the creek that runs, I don't know if it's a stream or what type of body of water is, but there is a body of water that runs through there, and Site 1 is the one that, is the only one that has the center on this side of, on, on the north side of that waterway. The other ones would have the center up further into the land, one, including one near the, closer to the pond, or actually, both of them would be nearer to the pond that's up there. You know, it adds significant expense to the project to do that, and we felt that putting it where it is proposed, the Site 1, next, next to the baseball fields, gives the opportunity for enhanced amenities for the, for the baseball fields as well. The parking is dirt, dirt and gravel out there right now. There are no bathrooms out there, and really no opportunity for, there's really no snack bar, you know, anything like that. So, a building there would offer some cross-promotional opportunities, if you will, between the baseball and other athletic activities and the COA. So, that's one, that's one of the pros. It was an extensive discussion, as you know, this has been going on for over a year, where we've been looking at this, and so, I think Amy helped prepare, Amy and Mary Beth both helped prepare the pros and cons of each site, those were in the packet. I think it, in a very efficient way, encapsulates a lot of discussion. I think people still, I, I think people do believe that Greenwood could be reused, but all things being considered, and with the pros and cons, really, when it came right down to it, the price, which was a, really, a, a big factor, as well it should be for most of the Task Force, got so close between a renovated and expanded Greenwood Center versus a brand-new facility at Turner Park, that it just didn't seem to be, you didn't just get, you just didn't get enough bang for your buck renovating Greenwood, and plus you had, you would have to give up some of the playing field space, a, at le, at least one of the ball diamonds that's there today. So, like I said, for the, those are the kind of the big reasons why Turner Park was recommended as the, as the most preferable. I think we've talked at length about, moving out the Select Board a little, Rich and I have talked at length, and I think we have talked a little bit about it here, about the need to continue our lane use planning process and look at what is the, is there potential for additional development at Turner? And, you know, as we near our tax cap, in fact, Kim mentioned her comments the other night about the need to really relook at our land, and I was heartened to hear that because I, I, I agree. So, putting it in Site 1 does not foreclose the opportunity to develop elsewhere in Turner Park. In fact, it, to me, at least on paper, it enhances the opportunity if the community was open to it, to develop more of the, the land in Turner Park. Perhaps, you know, we talked about the concept of a senior village or something like that, and then, if you did it right, and you allowed, and you allowed a higher level of density and affordability for senior housing in that site, then there are, I've seen models where the developer actually constructs the senior center for the use of the seniors in exchange for being able to develop a parcel of land with, like I said, higher density and some level of affordability. So, those are, those are concepts that are, that I think that the town could explore with Turner Park Site 1. You know, I think Greenwood, I, I, like I said, I do believe we could do it if, if we needed to at Greenwood, but, you know, and I say this all the time, when you look at the value proposition of the cost and what you'd be giving up at Turner Park, the Task Force agreed was the favorable site. So, I don't know. I'll turn it over to Amy and Mary Beth in case I didn't cover something.
Scott, and I can sort of review the pros and cons from the Task Force perspective.
We met a number of times. We did have Deets give a presentation to the Task Force, so that there would be a clear understanding for those people who were not involved from, let's say, ground zero on this project. There were people on that Task Force who were, who either sit, like myself, on the Council on Aging Board, or there was one other person who was from Faloka, the rest were from the general community. And obviously, those folks that were from the general community, and the person from Faloka, really didn't have the background information necessary. So, we had Deets come in and give a very comprehensive assessment of the various sites, that would be the three sites on Turner, at Turner, and of course, the existing Council on Aging site in Greenwood. Probably the, the things that, at the end of the day, last meeting, that, you know, came through quite loud and clear, is there was great concern amongst the committee that renovating the Greenwood Center would, left a lot of unknown cost factors, similar to what happened over at the high school, that when you, whenever you renovate an older building, and it is an older building, we would be not only dealing with the asbestos factor, but you start taking walls down, you always, always come up with surprise costs involved with that renovation. So, that, although there is a $400,000 difference between Greenwood and Turner, the Turner property, all sites at the Turner property, that becomes very questionable, whether in fact, there is that type of cost differential. We were also particularly sensitive to the fact at Greenwood, that the playing field that would be lost in that, in that particular site, the playing fields, there's no doubt, are limited in town, and to lose that playing field would, would certainly have an impact on those teams that play over there. The plus pot possibly, although we consider it somewhat of a negative, is that the code requires that the entire building be brought up to code, which is why that number reaches such a high figure, and that, and that the difference between the two, Site 1 and Greenwood Park is, was only $400,000. We are, it would indicate that we would have to shake, share parking and et cetera with, in an area where there's a lot of small children. It would limit the Parks and Rec Department from their additional program. The Turner property appeals to a lot of the elder citizens, because it is, quite frankly, closer to where they live. You have the Genesis House Emerson, it's a clo, it's closer to what, although the Deets report talks about the center of town as being the town green, I think most residents would consider the town center more the commercial district in, in Long Meadow. That's where people come, they shop, they meet, they have a coffee at Starbucks, that's really the center of town in most people's minds, and not, not Town Hall or the existing community center. So, putting it over at Turner Park would make it more convenient, particularly for the elderly citizens who reside at Glen Meadow, Genesis House, and Emerson. It's not the distance that it is over currently at Greenwood. We did, the Council on Aging had done a lot of initial research. Phil Hallahan particularly was involved in that initial research, and did investigate all of the open land space that is available, whether it be parkland or land that is owned by the town, and, which is why the Deets report ultimately ended up focusing on Greenwood Park as well as the Turner property, because those seem to be the most attractive of all of what might be available for renovation. I would say that it was, it was all but unanimous to make the recommendation to the Select Board for the Turner Site Park, Site Number 1. There was one person who was not on board with that, they felt that Greenwood, the Greenwood Center would, would be a better use of the town's funds. No specific reason given, but every person on the Task Force was questioned, they gave their opinion, and without a doubt, it was overwhelming in favor of Greenwood Site Park Number, Site Number 1. I will say that the Task Force also felt that Sites 2 and 3 would be very cost prohibitive, although they are more physically attractive, that they would be cost prohibitive, given the situation with the town funds. So, that's, that's essentially where we came to. Certainly welcome to ask any questions you'd like.
You know, so the, you said that there's a $400,000 difference between...
Correct.
You know, keeping it Greenwood and, and what kind of difference is there between the current, the Site Number 1 and 3 and 4?
Oh, it's quite a bit of money. I'll have to go back to the Deets report. Your call off the top of your, it was a lot of money.
A lot of site development.
Like a million dollars more.
It was a lot of site preparation. Also involved transversing that, the creek that is there, the, the flow of water, so there's significant Conservation Commission involvement. So, it was millions of dollars, literally.
Yeah. The Greenwood was about almost 6, 5.8 million.
Okay.
And then this one was just 600, a little over 600 million. I think then it jumps to 7.5, and then almost 9.
I have, I have the exact numbers here.
Maybe I was close.
Oh, this was a summary? Why, do you want to take it?
Where we at?
Yep. Greenwood Park, Y and 2 and 3. Those are the right numbers.
That's right, the right numbers.
Sorry about that. We don't have exactly the numbers, but it was a $400,000 difference between the two sites.
In terms of how the committee talked about it, before they even settled on what the perfect site was, the Task Force voted to eliminate the other two sites from consideration. That was kind of the first step.
Yeah.
Because I, I think, just, you know, if you look at the Deets report, it was just the first blush out of Tom, it just, they just didn't make any sense for a lot of reasons. It was a very creative idea on Deets' part to present them that way, but when they looked at the costs, and again, and again, not really the direct cost, but the opportunity cost of what you'd be giving up by doing that, the Task Force coalesced around the idea that 2 and 3 just didn't really work. So, the first vote, if you will, was, let's take those off the table and really get ourselves focused on Greenwood versus Site 1.
The only other thing is, you know, our current site is very limited in terms of gatherings, and I know there've been other communities, senior centers where, you know, they have, it looks like they could fit several hundred, maybe, I don't even know, 300 people in a room. And, and I don't know if we've taken that into account, that as we have a, a different location, if we're going to draw a larger crowd, and I don't know what, what's the largest gathering space going to be, where, like, people get together for lunch? I don't know.
Well, it's certainly, it will be an ex, at least double what we have now.
Yeah. We, we did a whole programming study and put, at least to serve 100 for, in the dining room, in a new building, at least 100. We just had an event where we, I mean, St. Patrick's Day, overflow, we have to cap them off at, we served 80, but we squeezed them in, and...
Because I'm wondering if it's going to be even big enough.
And there, there's a big, long waiting list for most of our, our meals, if they're, so, we have an event tomorrow where there's 15, 15 people are on the waiting list, so...
Well, I don't think there's any question that there is a need to enlarge the space for the seniors in town. First of all, you should recognize that you mastered a study on our town, as well as a lot of other surrounding communities. Over 25% of our residents are over the age of 60. That there are more residents over the age of 60 than there are residents under the age of 18, living in our town. That is not going to get smaller with the baby boomers coming through, and maybe some of you belong in that category. And, so, that, that segment of the population, although we lose some of the population certainly every year, that segment of the population is going to grow. And, there's also no question that there's a great need and use of the senior center, particularly, not only for health reasons, for well checks, for the social worker to be out within the community servicing the more frail elderly within our town, but there's also a great need for more social activities, for more people to be able to participate in. You know, you can't be shutting your doors to your citizens who've been paying taxes for 40, 50 years, in, in the one place in town that they can go for social interaction with, with their peers. So, the fact that it's needed is unquestionable. It's just where do we put it? What do, how do we make that happen? And as far as the design specifically for how many, how much space is each room going to take, quite honestly, we're not there yet.
Okay.
You have, you decided at one of your last meetings to appoint a, a committee. Certainly, that is the next step, and that will entail some sort of design process, I would assume.
Alright. And, and you, well, you've already looked at all the centers in local areas, so you have that base to work with.
Yes.
Okay, that's all mine.
Yeah.
Mark?
I don't know if you focused the right, Stephen, what's the footprint of, of Turner Number 1? And by that, I mean, what footprint of land do we carve out of potential commercial development if we were ever to commercially develop Turner by, by doing this?
The back end, along the pond?
No, no, I'm just saying, Turner 1, in other words, you've got to put a little bit of buffer around there, I guess, if you were going to have whatever somebody might do down in the future. I'm just wondering, is that, is that four acres, or is it two acres, or is it?
Site 1?
Yeah.
I don't know, so I have...
Site 1 will take 3 acres.
We've got a bunch of people in the back yelling.
Mary, Mary, now, you're over there.
Thank, thank you.
Site 1 will take 3 acres. Site 2 would have taken 2.5 acres, and Site 3 also 3 acres.
Thank you.
Obviously, that includes parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
The other thing that is an asset about developing Site 1 is that we will be bringing in infrastructure, or the town will be bringing in infrastructure, water, sewer, parking, pavement, et cetera, that in the event that the back end of that property, the left side of that property were to be developed, then that infrastructure is going to be in place and not be an expense for that development.
But the developer.
Oh.
Any other questions for the group?
You know, did we get the Deets, you know, I, I've been searching for this and I didn't find it.
A long time ago.
Yes.
We got, we got the draft copy, I don't know if we got the final copy.
I remember getting that, but I, I was looking.
October of 2015.
Okay, I remember that, but there was something about the final cost estimates, I was looking at the updates.
That was in that report.
That was in the.
That was part of that report, the October 1st, 2015 report.
Because I was looking at one of the updates that we got, I think from you, Amy, that in January of this year, you were still waiting on the final cost estimates.
That came out, you, you had, I think, sent it around, but that, they, Deets did additional work and looked at the building with, they found a study with the asbestos information and the cost for remediation.
Okay, so.
So I can get you a copy of it, but it did.
All right, because I didn't see that.
You're correct, that initial report was short information that we were able to identify that they had not cost out, they had not priced out. So we sent it back to them to look at that, those additional cost factors, so that we were truly looking at correct numbers, or let's say, close to correct numbers. I do have the total cost analysis, if you do want that.
Yes, please.
This was like.
Alex, it was in the October 5th packet.
Right. That was, initially was.
I was asking about the final.
Yeah.
The final.
Site One is 8,162,000.
Eight million?
Eight million, 162.
Okay.
Site Two is 8,793 and Site Three was 9,293.
Nine million, 293.
Right. And Site One, after they went through it, was something like 7,700,000, about a $400,000 difference, 380 precisely.
You mean Greenwood, not?
Greenwood, I'm sorry, Greenwood, 380,000.
Greenwood was what, 7.?
I think minus 380, 7.8 million.
Okay, so that, okay, that's, I remember Greenwood being a lot less.
Right. It was initially with the first study, but they had not looked at the cost of asbestos remediation, along with upgrading, the code upgrades necessary on the entire building for.
Fire.
Fire, you know, the fire suppression system, smoke detector system, it's extensive, an extensive list. The other, the other cost factor that, that is not built into this report is the, the cost of, of the loss of services for the period of time that Greenwood would have to be renovated. The senior center would have to be moved to some location. In addition to that, we would lose services, we'd have to move the meal program, the federal meal program, probably to East Long Meadow. It just becomes very cost, very costly and very cumbersome and during that period of time, which would certainly be all of six months, if not a year, by the time the house, the building was renovated, you know, there would be an impact on the services to our seniors, our most frail seniors in town.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you.
You're welcome.
This was a nice briefing. Steven, thank you for the briefing on us. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope you enjoyed it at home also.
Richard, can we take up this next?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
We have a proposal for a one-day liquor license for Bay Path University and I move that we approve the one-day liquor license for April 4th, 2016, as proposed and approved by the Chief of Police.
Your second, hon?
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion? Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Pass. Okay, now we've got the vote on the 2017 budget, Mr. Persic. I don't know if there'll be a question, huh, but why don't you come on up?
Can we already do this? Can we already do this?
We haven't, did we vote on the permit?
I thought we, did we vote on the budget?
I don't remember, Paul.
On last Thursday?
Oh, there's Paul.
We had talked about the numbers moving around, I prepared the updated summary sheet and the budget line items as you folks directed and that was sent out, so I don't think there was ever a formal vote on the bottom line budget per se. But there was a lot of direction on where you wanted to go, so I would assume that this vote is, if nothing's going to change, would be very quick.
For the purpose of the discussion, I make a motion that we approve, the budget is finalized on Friday, what was that, March, it's Thursday, I'm sorry, March 17th.
March 17th.
And, and it shows a, I don't even know how to summarize this, this budget that you sent us, Paul, that, that stated in fiscal year 2017 budget overview dated 3/21/16 that Paul Persic sent us today.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead, Alex.
So I just want to make sure I understand it completely. The overview, you've got on capital, last year was 1,416?
Correct.
Okay, and this would be at 1,526.
Five, yes.
So it'd be 110 above last year, but 148 short of the initiative.
Right.
Okay.
I don't think the 148 might be an old, might be an old note.
Okay.
It would be 70, it'd be about 90, 98,000 short.
Right, because 1.623 is, all right. And then the OPEB, that's, my, my notes from last time was that there was a $7,000 increase to OPEB.
That is still correct, it's dead.
That's still.
Right, the number's 244, 721.
Okay. And the way we'd be doing this, we would still have the 29,000 in unused levy?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about the best paid warrant.
And then, we had voted on using free cash and is that part of?
Line eight, on the summary sheet.
Okay, so we're, we're up to 100,000, the way this is right now.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think I, I think I've got it.
I think the last important number would be that the schools would be short 125,000 against their budgetary request.
Right.
Yep.
It doesn't show it here, but that line item for forestry would be included.
This isn't the detailed budget.
Right, I know. But that would be included in the new budget.
Right.
And the, okay, the other thing I was going to say is the salary adjustments, that's, we're still at 212,500?
Correct.
And that's line 22A.
Right. There, there would be a separation, Murray, with that new line item.
Okay. But he hasn't told you what the breakdown is yet.
He has, it would be 15,000 for the planting.
Okay.
So that line would drop to 180, or it's 195 now, it'll drop to 180 and then the other line would be inserted at 15 for planting.
And then the public safety, is that up 5,500 based on the crossing guard?
Yes, it went from 121,565 to 127,065, yes. It has the increase. In the town manager's budget to your budget, it's up $5,500 on page four of the detailed needed.
Okay, all right. But it, the overall amount, whoops, 4.8, okay, I see it, all right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just saw the question, now, in the section for fees, line 42, you have 25,000, you know, kind of working its way across.
Yep.
And does that take into account some of the increases, some increases in fees and would that go up a little or is it not, and it was, it wasn't that much?
There was one fee that was increased, that was going to raise about $10,000 and that was in front of line 40, penalties and interest, that will be voted on the Maytown meeting. The other fee, some of the other fees that were voted were, I don't want to say nickels and dimes, but they were very small amounts.
Yeah.
And really did not have much significance to the bottom line.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm gonna, I just wanted, I won't belabor the point because I've said it before, but I just want to make it clear, I'm not going to be voting for this for all the reasons I've said before, but in, in summary, I, I think it caught, I think it's going to cause cuts to the school budget in a way that is really going to hurt the education of our kids. I, I think, you know, one thing that people should know is that after we got the town manager's budget, we, we actually added some things on the, to the town side budget. And of course, all of these things have value, but, you know, I, I just don't think this budget really reflects the priorities that our town ought to have, so I'm going to be voting against it.
Any other comments? Do you know the comments on?
Could I, I just would like to respond and I just look at, you know, the school department asked for, you know, an 800,882, $832 increase, you know, which is pretty good size and we did our best to, to do that. It was a 2.52%, you know, and it ended up at 3.9% increase. And so I really don't think that this board is trying to, you know, reduce the quality of our education in this town, I think that we're doing the best we can and I think that we're, we're giving a fair amount of money and, and to make it sound like the rest of us are, are against the schools, just, I don't think it's appropriate. I just think that, you know, we, it would be nice if we could have come up with all the money, but we did come up with quite a bit of money and, and I, I'm proud of that and I wouldn't say that we're trying to decrease the quality of our education for our students and our families.
I mean, just to be exact, the school committee did ask for 1.1 million, you folks in this budget that's proposed gave them just under a million.
And could I respond at?
Sure.
I mean, I guess, to me, it's kind of interesting, we talk about what they're asking for and what we're giving them. I mean, we're not giving them anything, it's not our money. We're, we're making decisions about allocating money and, you know, unfortunately, we've had all of this rhetoric about, you know, let's not set town and school against each other, but yet it seems like most of the discussion we've had is comparisons, you know, between, you know, percentages and, and, I mean, there have been significant cuts here to the school budget, which they outlined of 646,000. And, you know, when you look at, you know, what they're going to have to do to cut even further, and I think the town manager was talking about it cutting to bone, I think he was right and, you know, the fact is, we're not firing anybody on the town side. And, you know, we're able to maintain the level of service, basically. And I, I think a lot of that has to do with the simple fact that a lot of the services that take place, you know, at DPW and public safety, I mean, there's not a lot of variation year over year. I think the schools, they deal with a constantly changing environment. I mean, I just remember, you know, last year, because I, I went to the redistricting meetings and there were a lot of assumptions about how, how many kids were going to be in classes, you know, as late as April, May, and then come August, there was a very different number. And they can't control that. If somebody decides to move in town in June and they have to add a kindergarten section, well, they just have to deal with that. So, so to me, you know, what we're, what we're really trying to present to the town is, you know, it, it, it's not a, it's not a perspective of we're all one town, it's, it's kind of the opposite of that in my view.
Okay, Mark.
Yeah, I'm, at the risk of boring people who heard me say this the other night, I'm going to repeat myself because it's, it's worth repeating and, and that is that, you know, I believe this is a rounding error, we're, we're within $150,000 of a $65 million budget and the one thing that I can tell you, and I've now, today went back looking at past years and, and in each case, the revenue as we got into the fiscal year was different and in almost every case higher than we projected. So we project conservatively, but even last year, when we went to town meeting, we projected a certain amount of revenue and by the time the governor's budget was passed and the legislative budget was passed and we found out what income we had, our revenue was up far more than that $150,000. We, we'd been debating about one of the issues and, and I heard this last week at a meeting by one of our public comments was, you know, why can't you folks, you know, be a little tighter? And I just want everybody to understand that, that, that the Select Board and, and the town meeting sets the expense side of the general government budget. And when they set that expense side, the only way they can change it is at town meeting. So if we said, say for example, and I'm going to pull out a number, that we're going to spend $4,828,955 on public safety and for some reason we need additional overtime, even if the Parks and Recreation Department or the Adult Center come in under budget, we can't move it to public safety. Now, having said that, one of the beauties of town, of state law is that, that the school committee can move things, the only restriction they have is their bottom line. And so I'm not saying it's easy and I'm not saying it's desirable, but in a budget of $35 million for the general government side, we actually have six or eight different budgets that are in the one to, well, in one case, DPW's $8 million, but mostly in the one to $4 million range that we're trying to set exactly or precisely as best we can because we don't have flexibility once that town meeting ends. And the school committee has a little bit additional flexibility on the, the budget that they have to move things between line items. And so, you know, I understand, Alex, that there's tough decisions to be made, we're making tough decisions, I don't want somebody to come back to me and say, where were you when you let the town of Long Meadow fall way behind on, on long-term obligations? Marie pointed that out in terms of OPEB, we shouldn't become like Detroit is or some of these other communities that are, go bankrupt because of long-term obligations when you have the opportunity to make a decision on it. I think we are all in this together and again, I'd say that, you know, what we've done as a, as a community to get to where we are is admirable. I think it was a lot of work, we were on, the way I see it now, this says, mine currently says version five of the budget after our town manager presented us a budget that he said was down to the bare bones and couldn't be changed and couldn't be cut and somehow we found significant changes to make. So I'm, I'm satisfied with the budget, I plan on voting for the budget and I think we deserve a, you know, the credit that we, we get for getting through this once again.
Okay. I'm going to call a question, we've had ample discussion and I think people have had twice to voice their opinions. So all in favor of the budget? All opposed? Okay. The next item up is the Assign Annual Town Meeting Warrant. And there's a, Marie has a motion that will get out on the table and then we'll talk about it.
Okay. The motion to add to the warrant, should I just read it?
Yeah.
Well, the warrant would read, "I move that the town vote to transfer $50,000 from the prior warrant article number nine, approved at fall town meeting dated November 3rd, 2015 for tax, including but not limited to additional site analysis, conceptual site plan and conceptual building renderings for the development of the Turner parcel along with the new Adult Center or take any action relative thereto." And the description of it is, "The process of developing a strategy for providing more suitable space and faci-" suitable space and facilities for the Long Meadow Council on Aging started with a citizen's petition, with funding being approved at our May 13, 2014 annual town meeting. Since that time, we've completed a feasibility study and more recently, a more in-depth analysis of potential sites for the location of our new adult center. The working group's recommendation to the select board was that the new center be located on a section of land of parcel, Turner parcel. The funds requested through this article will allow for an expanded view of the Turner parcel development. If the new select board task agrees with the findings of the previous group, they will be able to expand the conceptual site design, site plan, and develop and review multiple plan. The final approval of any site and improvements will be presented to the town at a future meeting for approval." So, it's not any new money, it's just allowing further use of the current money that's still there.
Okay, I'll second the motion. And I think I'll start the discussion on this one, is I talked to Paul Pastergi, kind of Stephen, about this today, and it stems from the fact that, and we've had a presentation tonight, that the number one site from the original task force was that corner section of Turner Park. And we have set up an official task force now for the select board to go back and review all this data. And what I wanted to make sure, or hopefully prevent, was this group running into a stone wall. If they, if this group again comes back with the same site location, then it's likely a good time at that point to give consideration to what are our future plans for the entire Turner parcel? So that when we go in and say, say phase one is the center, so when we put the phase one in, and we have brought our utilities in, Marie, you mentioned, that we've got the utilities in for what we could foresee as a mega development in there, instead of piecemealing and having to go back and rip lines out and put new lines in year after year after year. So, we felt if we gave them this money, it's already money that's approved, it's just the reallocation of the money. So that they could, if they deemed that they wanted to go with that site, that they could bring to the select board and to the town, a site plan which more fully developed that area, even if it was two or three different site plans. Stephen mentioned going in about, and Mark, I think even mentioned, a commercial zone in there. It's, if we're going in there, it's a nice time to say, what do we hope to end up with in 15 years, if it's a 15-year development? Once that decision is made, it opens up a realm of possibilities that we haven't even dreamed of lately, because a developer may come in, do the whole thing, and give us the adult center. It's part of the right to develop that whole area into a tax revenue base. So, that is the only reason. Now, this thing is worded that it is 100% only if they decide to move forward on Turner. This money's not used for any other thing, it's just being, put a place marker on it and make it available, so if they do come back with that recommendation, they've got the funding to at least push it down a little bit more. Say anticipated, like it would only be $5,000 to $10,000 for the expansion of that footprint to plop down what a possible development would be. And then this would fall with the new task force that we're putting together right now. So, that's kind of the backbone to why I presented this, or why I had Marie present, but I did write it up and have her present it.
I'd like to comment.
Put it.
You know, and just, you know, there are folks in this town who remember going out there when they were younger and using an area on the lake, they used to have a, perhaps a German Turnverein, or it could have been a Schustenvrein, where they would go and shoot, but, but it was a German club, and they, it burned down, and they stopped using that property eventually. But, I agree, I mean, it would be nice to keep that vision open that perhaps that someday, families in our community could use that area on the pond, and I think it would be a great resource, so. So, I would support this.
Any other discussion? Mark?
Well, I guess first of all, I have a question. So, you were just talking about the importance of kind of linking this money that we'd be spending for site analysis at Turner Park to developing Turner Park. I mean, did I get that part correct?
No.
Okay.
No, we said if the task force comes back and say that they want to go ahead and put the senior center there, that's also their recommendation.
Okay.
Is that it seems the next logical thing is that if we're going to go into that site at this point, let's look into the future and say, what would we do if we even had five phases of development? What would it look like in there? So that we can do some long-range planning.
So, you're saying that discussion would be down the line?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this just gives them the money only if they decide that they want to push in, it's not, they're not going to use it all, there's likely to be $5,000 to $5,800 to get the rest of that to a point where it could come back to the select board, and then it would start to come back as a formal proposal of, this is a four-phase development or a three-phase development. And it would lead us to the next logical thing, then, is do we go on out with the town manager and get a developer to come in with proposals? You know, that would lead us to that next major leap.
So, the comment I have is, and I have no quarrel with what's been presented to us, I mean, it sounded logical. You know, in terms of proposing Turner, I mean, I'm also mindful of the fact that, you know, we've had other analyses that have suggested Greenwood, you know, and it seems like it's a close call. And, you know, you know, I guess we kind of saw this with the DPW, you know, suddenly we have money, you know, set to a purpose, and then all of a sudden, you know, that is taken as a stamp of approval for using that land, you know, that's going to impact a lot of people. I mean, if I'm reading this right, this is the thing that's going to later be said, well, we decided on Turner. To me, you know, that discussion ought to be opened up, and I don't know where that discussion would go. Maybe it would be exactly, you know, the same recommendation that we've heard, but, you know, for example, what effect is that going to have on the baseball association of the baseball fields? You know, what about other users of the park? I mean, to me, like, this feels a little premature if what we're doing is deciding on Turner. You know, because, you know, ultimately, you know, I think we need to have consensus as a town, that we're going to, you know, change something as significant as Turner Park, you know, to, so that we're all part of that discussion upfront, instead of, you know, saying, geez, you know, if we had known, you know, we could have told you any number of things that would have, you know, worn on this. So, to me, you know, I'm not really sure I can support this if that's what this means, if this is the decision, hey, we're going forward with Turner Park. And again, that's, that's nothing to suggest that I have any particular problem with what's been said, but I also want to hear the other sides of it. And to do that, you know, without, you know, hearing those other sides, I think is a mistake.
I think this will, this will likely meet more of your objectives than you believe in it will be, because you will ask, I'm sure, when they, if they walked in and said, okay, we weren't supporting 100% that site one, I believe you would even say, okay, well, what are you going to do with the rest of that land? Why aren't you thinking about your long-range plan back in there? And the only thing we said is, if that committee, just if, they come back and say, you know, we agree, we studied everything again, and that is the number one preferred site, it gave them the option, and I don't know if we put a proviso on it or something, but they would have money allocated, so they didn't have to wait for the next town meeting to be able to go ahead and put in a site development in there to then, as you say on the bottom of this, then be able to come back to the select board, start your forums and everything else, as it builds up for the town meeting. I think that would just be the start of it, Alex, it's certainly not the finish or the conclusion, because, you know, we even put the language in, that the final approval of any site and improvements will be presented to the town at a future meeting for approval. I mean, this is, this is a long-range type view, public forum, just like DPW, there's going to be a lot of input on DPW before it's finally settled on where it's going. It's just, it's just part of the process.
And I take your point, but one of the things that I've heard, you know, some of it's from Stephen, it's like, look, you know, town meeting voted for, you know, town meeting voted for this amount of money, knowing it was for Wolf Swamp, ergo, town meeting supported Wolf Swamp. And I'm a, I'm a little concerned that if this passes the way it is, that's what's going to be said. Look, we've already had that decision, you know, we're moving on from that, Turner's been decided.
Okay.
And to me, you know, if that's how it's going to be presented, then we should discuss it all upfront.
I didn't, I didn't think that what you said, you said they support DPW being relocated.
Well, I think, what I actually said, which clearly has no bearing on how it has been interpreted, because I've had this exchange multiple times, and said this in public meetings, was, it was really in response to a comment of people who said, well, why didn't you tell anybody you were looking at Wolf Swamp Fields as a part of this process? And I said, well, when we asked for additional funds to continue the process, we did tell people that the preferred site was looking like Wolf Swamp Fields. And the comment gets made back, well, you know, it was a fall town meeting, there weren't very many people there, and my response back to that is, but it's still a legislative branch where these decisions get made, and it's not, it's not a flaw in our project process that people didn't show up for the fall town meeting. I've never said that it meant that Wolf Swamp Field is the site that the town has chosen, it wasn't really presented in those terms. What I've said is, we have expressed to the community that the funds requested was to move the DPW to another site, and we did say Wolf Swamp Field was a preferred site. So, after that, when we started working on it and people felt caught off guard, my response is, well, we did tell people at town meeting, and in the newspaper, front page above the fold, I believe, the week before town meeting. So, I think the response was more, we've tried to get this information out to the community as a part of this process, that this is something that's under consideration. And to Richard's point, I don't know how much, well, the, each project goes through a certain set of stages, and a lot of times, and I've also said this before, I remember, so I'm repeating myself, but if we want to have a meeting where people want to come and say, I just don't like this, then we can do that. But if you want to have a session where you can tell people, you can hear the questions people have, and then go out and get answers, that to me is a more productive public dialogue than just allowing people to just vent about things they like and don't like. That's all this is intended to do, not this motion, the DPW project, the Deets report, all of these things are just attempts to get public input, hear questions, and get answers, and then move on to some decision-making checkpoints. And I, if I understand the warrant article, I think that it does the same in terms of, what's our next checkpoint on the potential for development at Turner Park? And the thing I want to reiterate is, I know everybody wants to hear this, but the town, the townspeople are going to have to come to a point where they're going to have to be confronted with perhaps changing some of the character of the community in terms of how much conservation land we have, how many, how much recreational space we have, if we really are going to grapple with this tax levy cap issue. Mark said the other night, the reason why we have a tax rate issue is because of the denominator. And part of the equation, in addition to sustaining a good school system to sustain our property values, we need to look at opportunities to expand the overall assessed value of the community, and that means adding development. And that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this. I think people who look at Turner Park, look at it, especially the part of by the pond, look at it, is really a very, a very nice piece of land, very, something that would be very suitable for development. So, what would it cost to get infrastructure, roadways, things like that into that site? What would it look like? What would a proposed development look like? And I don't know, if I'm not inferring the purpose of the article, Richard or Marie, please correct me, but I think we want to say, what would it look like, order of magnitude, what kind of cost would we be looking at, and then what would be the order of magnitude benefits?
Oh, Marie was first.
Did I say that?
Yeah, I guess, should I say Marie's first, and then Mark?
I think a better comparison is the water tower property. And I know we brought it up, and we said, let's look at what we could do there, and we went to the school department, and the school department all just had to say, we're not using it for schools, which they're not, but they said, we hesitate to say that till we know what you're really thinking. So, we were back to a step of saying, well, what were the possibilities there? Now, I think that this, the reason, when Richard mentioned this to me today, it made sense to me, because you hate to build a building there that suddenly is going to block out anything. Maybe if they take it and they look a little bit further, they might say, well, we could put a little senior housing there in the corner. I, but there's going to just be bringing options back to the town, and the town might decide, we don't want to do anything like that, and this is not what we're interested, but most likely, they're going to say, we want more information on what you're considering. The thing is, at Salem, I talked to the mayor of Salem, and she says, what's absolutely amazing is the private-public partnerships, where you have a developer come in, and they build some senior housing, and then they build the senior center for you, and they hand you the keys. So, I think that it makes sense to just get what the possibilities are, and I always say, it always goes back to town meeting. Town meeting is going to make the final decision on what they want, and this is just telling people what the options are.
Mark?
Yeah, I have kind of a whole series of comments and responses, this is obviously the first time I've seen this. And as it was read, I'm saying to myself, is the definition of Turner parcel sufficient? I mean, what does that mean, and how much of Turner parcel gets included? And, you know, I'm not sure that this is sufficiently defined. I, you know, why $50,000 from the prior warrant article? Why don't we just say, that project's over, it's done with, it has nothing to do with what we're doing here, and go get additional money to?
Why would we have to raise and appropriate?
But if we're not spending money that was there, you put it back, it goes back.
But the money, the money is there, you know?
Fine, all I'm saying, Richard, is we keep, we seem to keep piggybacking on top of, we appropriate money, let's just keep using it, expanding, expanding, expanding uses. I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be cleaner to just start over again, from a, you know, I assume $50,000 is a?
Is what's left in.
Okay, and there's no way of knowing if that's sufficient, or if that's adequate, or, you know, and if we really want to do this right, and it takes $65,000 or $125,000, did we give ourselves insufficient, you know, funds to actually do a full study? So, you know, I'm concerned about clearly that, and, you know, the other two things are, I heard the explanation, but the warrant article, what gets passed is what gets passed, and anything that's in the explanation has no legal bearing, other than it's used to convince people to pass it. And I think that if we want final approval for site improvements to be presented to the town at a future meeting, then it ought to go into the warrant article, for example, if we're going to do that. My final comment is, is just procedural. You know, here we go again, we closed the warrant, are we going to open the warrant to insert another article? And if we do that, what does it do to anybody else who may want an article put into the warrant?
Well, that answer's pretty clean, it's going to, if we open the warrant, anything that's sitting out there can be brought in.
Right, so, you know, Mike, that's also obviously concern as we went into, you know, last year or the year before, with opening and closing the warrant, several different times. I mean, you know, I think a comprehensive plan is great, and I think we, you know, if we want to get a comprehensive plan, whether it's for the so-called Turner parcel, or any water tower parcel, or any other parcel, it makes sense. You know, I don't know how you get a plan when we've heard everything from mixed use to, you know, to just more residential housing, to commercial space, to all kinds of things, and how do we come up with, you know, a plan as opposed to multiple plans? You know, I facetiously said to Ms. Mergeron, once you said, you know, you want to bring in the utilities there, you want to bring in enough. You know, when we developed large parcels in the past, whether it be Williamsburg Drive or John Quillane, it was the developer who brought in all the utilities, the town didn't bring them in for the developer, and clearly, I think Marie said, get the developer to pay all the costs, it's clearly a preferred method for doing it. So, I think there's some value to it, I'm just not sure doing this at the 11th hour and to, before our town meeting is the, or before we close the warrant is the right way to do this. I'd like to, I'd like to have a comprehensive plan, I'm not sure this is it.
Okay, any other, so Tom?
Well, I just, you know, think, in terms of comprehensive plan, I mean, I think that these sort of develop, because, you know, I look at that area in the woods, I think, you know, we could also use that for town purposes. I mean, that could be an unbelievable place for a summer camp, you know, for, you know, I look at Greenwood, and I look at Turner Park, and I say, if I was a kid, I'd rather go to camp at Turner Park. I mean, I could see having a whole recreation center out there, and so it isn't, this is just commercial. see having a whole recreation center out there. And so it isn't, this is just commercial. I mean, this opens up the door, and then, well, so then what does that do? Well, then that opens up Greenwood as a place that maybe we don't have to rehab that building. Maybe someone will just buy that building. You know, we could find a way to put another road in there. So it just builds on what our options are. And I think that, you know, I, you know, I think you probably have a better idea about opening the warrant, but I know the last time I saw the warrant, and the time I see it now, there's quite a few things that jumped on. So I don't know any more things are going to jump on between now and then anyways. So, but I do see that it's not just, you know, it doesn't just have to be business. I mean, you know, I spend a lot of time on camps, and I know that would make a great location. I'd rather see our kids in the woods than in a big field, but then, that's me.
Okay. Alex?
You know, I would support this if it was just, if you were to take out the language about the development of Turner parcel. So if you just said conceptual building renderings for the development of a new adult center, I'd be fine with that.
We've already got that, Alex.
But, I mean, the development of Turner parcel, I mean, to me, like, this is a really big idea, sort of, I mean, like, this was so, this was so sudden, we couldn't even get into the packet three days ago, you know. So, I mean, to me, developing Turner parcel is, you know, a month's long discussion, you know, not something that we, you know, kind of sit here and think, you know, at the spur of the moment, that seems like a good idea.
What could we do without an appropriation? I mean, what can we do in terms of planning?
Nothing meaningful.
And what do you do with an appropriate? I mean, really?
Well, I mean, it's, no, I mean, you get some, you may get some conceptual, conceptual site design. Not much. I mean, the answer is not much, but more than you have today.
But what if we went, for example, and put out an RFP to contractors and saying, "Give us a plan for developing, potentially developing Turner Field, and oh, by the way, we've got this spot for an adult center, so, you know, include an adult center on two acre, whatever it was, three and a half acres or four acres in there." I mean, you're going to get, I hope, a few ideas from people who want to try to make money. You know, I don't know how valuable they are, but...
Not very. And developers, if there's a zone change required, if the goal is to get a developer, like you said, to put in all the infrastructure, build a senior center...
No, I didn't say build a senior center.
But if that is a goal, which to me, it should be a goal, then you're looking at...
It's nice, but not required, yeah.
Right. But you're looking at a higher density development, so they can have more units that can then pay for the cost of that, of that, the fixed cost of infrastructure and potentially some, some or all of an adult center. To develop that kind of thing costs the developers money, and they're not going to do it if the zoning change is required and there's all these hurdles in existence. They're not going to throw the money away on their architects and designers on spec. And that's where the more information we can develop, that we can then hand to put in an RFP, or an RFQ really, Request for Qualifications, adds value to the backend product. And that's why I think, to Alex's point, even this isn't a statement that we're going to develop Turner Park, it's just a statement that, "Let's explore what it would take to develop Turner Park." And I think Richard and I have been clear, we need to start having those discussions. I mean, I haven't heard you say one thing that you think we can do differently to help deal with this. You haven't talked at all about the tax rate issue. It's just, it's just no to any, you know, no to Wolf Swamp Fields, no to Turner Park. It's, you know, we can't keep just saying, "Let's just keep things the way they are," because that's, and if people want, if people don't want to change, that's fine. But understand that it's going to have a consequence on the school system and the town services and everything else in the future.
Yeah, I think it's putting options in front of the town, because we are eventually going to, and not far in the future, we're going to have to be making some very serious decisions. Are we going to increase the class size to over 30? Are we going to not expand certain programs of the school? Are we going to have to get rid of some police and fire? And that's coming down in the next few years. And we can tell people, "Well, this is what we could do." Hopefully, I'm hoping we can do this with Water Tower, too. This is what the Water Tower development might look like. This is potential, you know, tax revenues coming from it, plus the initial sale. This is what we can look at here. Here's three possibilities. We have to start growing this portfolio of what the possibilities are, because we are going to have to make some decisions. And now we're hearing, in 20 years, we're talking about multimillion dollar for putting something underneath, an extra sewer line, a redundancy or a brand-new one. I mean, we've got to look at, this is sort of the master plan, and this is a small way of putting our toe in the water. And it's something we probably should be talking about. And the town will eventually be able to get their hands on this and decide, "Well, no, I really don't want this here. I prefer camp. Let's get the revenues from the camp. Let's develop the Water Tower property by then, the new piece that's going to go into, whether it's Glenn Brook or Williams School." So we need to start understanding as a board, how do we start looking at projects in the future and master planning? And this is, I think, a small way of beginning it. Will we have enough money? We never know. But we got to take the first step. What comes first, the chicken or the egg? I don't know. But all I know is, we got to have something there in the next five years. And we, the town has to start having this discussion. We had this huge discussion here on the 17th, which was good. I mean, we, we all are coming from it from different ways, different concerns, but it was good for us to be able to sit and talk about it. And this might start the discussion in the fall, in the spring town meeting, or it might just be too busy a warrant that no one's going to look at it. But then it will come back to the town in the fall town meeting, and we'll start the discussion. I don't expect anything being done quickly. I think this is going to take a couple of years before this town really makes a decision on what they're going to do in any developments. But if we don't take the first step, we'll never get there.
So, I mean, I guess to respond to Stephen, I don't think I've ever said no to Turner Park. It's never been, that's never been presented to us. And I am supportive of a senior center. You know, the question is location, and how much it's going to cost, and how we're going to get there. But to me, you know, it's just, it's the sort of top-down way this is being done, that, you know, we're deciding, like, if it is a two-year process, why is it that Richard's drafting this today and giving it to you, and we're reading it tonight? I mean, like, there's clearly, you know, time to think about this and to engage the community, so that people who like conservation area, and they may, you know, disagree with Stephen's balancing between conservation and, you know, tax rate. I mean, like, that's the discussion that we need to have. But to me, it's sort of pushing this forward like this, you know, is premature.
I can actually answer that. And the reason is, the DEETs report and the recommendation was just made not all that long ago, you know. And we had the pros and cons discussed tonight, because the board wanted to learn, why was Turner Park the preferred site? And they made, I think we all made a very lucid presentation about what that feedback was from the task force. So in terms of timing of this, it really would have been out of order to present this even a week ago, before the board had heard the analysis of Turner Park, of the Turner site, number one. So, you know, I think that is the answer as to why this, and to why, you know, do this now. It's because it's what Marie said. You have to start someplace. And to get to, to get to, and I don't know how many charrettes you've planned and run, but I've run more than several of them. To get to an effective public engagement in project development, you need to present information about what things look like, what they could cost, what are permitting issues. You have to present that information to the public, so people can make educated and informed decisions and consider options. Okay? That's what you have to do in these processes. That's, to me, that's all this gives us, one toehold into doing. And then, if all we get out of this is a schedule of tasks that need to really be done, and a cost associated with those tasks to take it to the next level, then that's an effective use of the money. But to just say, "The public just needs to get together and figure this out," well, based on what? Based on what information? Based on what knowledge? That's what this stuff does. That's why we hired Weston Stansfield at DPW facility. That's why we've engaged Pioneer Right Planning Commission for Long Range Plan. You have to give people good information to make decisions on. That's all this is.
You know, I can make one observation. This discussion, the board is changing. This discussion wouldn't have taken place seven years ago. We're having discussions that weren't taking place seven and eight, nine, 10 years ago. I mean, about the town generally, because we were more project-driven. It's a very beneficial discussion that we're having. And as Marie says, tipping the toe in the water, whatever, but it's time we start having the discussion. And what Stephen just said, absolutely is 100% spot-on. We're data collecting right now, so that when we finally do get ready, or whatever the task force gets ready, to start to move forward, that they've answered a lot of the questions that are going to be fired at them. And the more information that we can bring forward at this point, because, see, there's been a lot of work, if you look at those drawings, there's been a lot of work done by DEETs up there. It doesn't have to be repeated by anyone. I mean, they've shot topo, they've outlined the wetlands. I mean, there's a lot of work going into what we've already got. It's a nice deliverable, along with the, the original study was a good deliverable. But they start to build the package like we had from DPW, starts answering all these questions. The benefit of these discussions is the more discussions we have like this, the more questions get out that we can get answers for as we do move forward. But there's, as I say, there's nothing in here to imply that that's the location. I just said, if in three months or two months, that group comes back and says, "You know, this is a number-one location, but, you know, we'd like to get the architectural firm in to take a look at the rest of it." Now, I checked the language on the old warrant article, I checked with Paul, and I checked with Stephen, and both of them felt that the way the language was, we could not use that funds to do any further exploration if we decided that we wanted to go here, or any programming. So that's the reason that I brought this thing forward. It just occurred to me, because, you know, we've had a discussion, Mark, you and I had the other day, if we could use those funds. Well, we read the article again, and Paul says, "No," he said, "it's likely not clear enough, so we have to rework it." And that's why this is here, folks. It's just a safety gap in case this, people want to move forward, that we don't stop them again and waste another three months going to fall town meeting and having the same discussion again. Let them keep going. It's no new money. The money is already appropriated. We're repurposing it like we did before. That's, I can't, I can't say anything else. I mean, that's it in a nutshell. I think, I think it's a good, a good move on our board to be looking forward and try to keep our committees steered in the right direction and keep them moving forward.
Well, I mean, I guess, you know, if we do approve this, and that we're, you know, in the next, I don't know, month and a half, heading toward a vote, that is a step in the process of developing a piece, a large piece of land that's been recreation and conservation area for decades...
No.
But, no, what?
Why are you saying it's not recreation land?
It's not recreation?
No, it's not recreation.
It's been used, is it?
Well, yes, but it's not designated as recreation. It's clear titled.
That's my, my point is, we've been using it for walking in the woods, and, and running cross-country races, and all the manner of things, you know. That, you know, that's the lead-up to that discussion. I mean, I would suggest that we have, you know, we publicize this, you know, "Hey, you know, we're, you know, the select board is thinking about developing Turner parcel. But let's solicit input from people who use it. Let's solicit input from the sports associations and that sort of thing," so that that issue is kind of joined. To me, that, that makes sense, you know, if that's the direction we're going to go. Frankly, I would have liked to have that discussion before we put it on the warrant.
Okay. Any other discussion? See, CNO discussion, call for a vote, all in favor?
What are we voting for?
We're voting on this article to be put on the warrant. That's what was, that was what was presented and seconded.
Okay, the warrant's closed.
Okay, well, we can open the warrant. Well, this vote that we will place is on the warrant. As soon as we do, we put it on. So, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Now, signing annual town warrants, so I guess we're going to open the warrant at this point. And we've got, there was some, some areas that were still left open, too, in Thorpaulis, the explanations and all.
There were a few explanations that came in today. I think Debbie had updated certain things. I don't know if you have them in the packet or not.
Richard, just, explanations aren't part of the warrant.
I just, just making a statement, Mark.
No, I'm just saying that we can change explanations the day it goes to the printer.
Right. I was just noticing all the, all the yellow spots here. We're getting into discussion.
And I have, Debbie and I have been talking today. Unfortunately, I didn't get to it before I went out to you guys, but there's a couple of grammatical things I've noticed. The other thing is, I know that, and I was just searching in my emails, I know we'd received an opinion some time ago, if there is a difference between the select board's budget and the school committee budget, I don't, I thought there was something about what has to be published in the warrant. I know the original motion has to be, the motion made at town meeting has to be the school committee's budget, so if they don't amend theirs, it'll be whatever they gave us. I don't...
Is that, is, could, do you have an email to that effect?
I do, yeah.
Could you forward it to us?
Yeah, I think that came up last year.
I think there's an actual legal opinion from Dave.
I was reading it to see if it mentioned it in the warrant.
Can you just send it to us?
If it specified in the warrant, but, yeah. It definitely has to be the original motion, so I didn't know if, I didn't want to just double-check that one point, so it's possible the school committee budget may have to be added. Just want to double-check.
Yeah, I guess it has to be...
It has to be, for sure, it has to be in the motion. That I did see from Dave.
Right.
Just did come up last year, so...
So what do you do? You present an unbalanced budget?
No, you offer, no, you offer the amendment. You make the motion, then the amendment gets read, which is the select board's...
That's what we did.
That's what, yeah.
I think also, in the detailed pamphlets that are put together, it will show what was requested by the school committee and what was recommended.
Oh, it's in the booklet, that's right. It's in the overall booklet. That's right.
Right. And the motion would just be the school committee's number, the original motion.
So I'm sorry, so the select board member who stands up and makes the motion has the school committee?
Read the, the number originally.
And then, what do you anticipate happening?
I would imagine that a member of the select board would amend that to the number that they voted on within the budget that you voted on half hour ago.
He'd sent it out there, but it was 2014, but he'd applied on that to the board. So the other thing is, sorry.
No, no, just moving my glasses. That's it.
Okay.
Not throwing anything.
Yes. You know, just, I think, and these are just things that I just want to clean up before it goes to publishers, so I'm just kind of reading out my list. I think one of the things is, we talk about the stormwater utility fee. I think we, I don't know, Paul, how you feel, but I thought referring to it as an enterprise fund instead of a utility, is that more, is one more accurate thing than the other?
Stephen, traditionally, we've gone through this article by article. Are we not going to do that?
We can do that.
Yeah, we've supposed to do article by article.
Because I, I just...
Well, you have to, you have to make a motion and approve each one, don't you?
Right. So rather than do it now...
I think what, and I started getting specific, Mark, but I think the overall point was, there may be some grammatical stuff we may change administratively after you go article by article. I just want to...
But it's just grammatical.
Well, there was one thing I wanted to change, too, but why don't we go article by article?
I have a motion for approval of Article One.
Even before we get to Article One, has anyone checked with the moderator, being in the gymnasium or the auditorium?
It's going to be in the gym.
It's going to be in the gym, okay. So this, I have, you have to change the heading?
No, and I think, I believe the gym seats more people than the auditorium.
Right, it was.
And I think that that was, I believe that that was the discussion about having the gym. We'll double-check before it goes out, though.
Right. Like I said, but it's just written one way here now.
Okay. Motion for Article One?
I move.
So...
Okay. Any discussion on Article One? See, CNO discussion, all in favor of Article One? Motion for Article Two?
I move Article Two, be adopted and placed in the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion on Article Two?
So, the $55,000 is...
Well, 55, actually, is now 60.
After last night?
After last night.
So that causes 5,000?
Yeah, they did pre-treatment and it's all, that's, you know, it did probably on the high side, but that was the estimate that Mario came up with. the high side, but that was the estimate that Mario came up with this morning. They add another five to which is to be safe.
So, should it be 60 then?
Yes, it should be 60, absolutely.
Okay, all right. So, do you want to make that part of your motion?
Yeah, fine. We adopt article two, add $60,000 for snow and ice removal.
Second.
Okay. Did you amend the motion original, or did you?
Yes, withdrew the first motion.
Okay, withdrew the first and placed the second, okay. So, okay, any more discussion on? All in favor? Article three?
We adopt article three.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Article four?
He mounted article four would drop by $5,000 to offset what was put in for snow and ice.
Take it to 135,716?
Correct.
Okay, so the motion, the motion there is for the 135,716.
Yeah. I move we adopt article four for transfer funds, 135,716.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Article five?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt article five.
The second.
I'll second.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so, we've discussed this before, right? This was the finance versus pay out of free cash, right? And I think it had something, I think your recommendations, Paul, had something to do with the cost of borrowing. Am I remembering that correctly?
Well, the cost of borrowing is very cheap. We're talking about short-term rollover of bands or state house notes, probably at a percent of, you know, .65, .75 percent.
Right. So, but I mean, we're using free cash to make up to 78.
Right. We're using free cash for a portion of it, mainly because the town of Long Meadow received some rebate money.
No, I remember that part.
That ended up in free cash, so that's why I wanted to use that portion plus a little bit, just to kind of round it off, as opposed to almost double tax aid, double taxing the taxpayer, where we got the money in the bank, but if we go and add it to the tax levy, we're kind of giving them a double whammy.
So, so we could borrow that at a reasonable cost.
You could borrow.
It's just a matter of this idea of keeping it down.
Yes, you could borrow the two, the full $278.
One could argue, we've already borrowed it out, which I think is Paul's, Paul's point. In our original funding of this high school, we borrowed that because we paid, we borrowed a bunch of money, 44 million, 100,000, but we got money back as a rebate.
Right.
And it's that money that we got back as a rebate, that one in general funds, we want to apply that to the cost of the school. Came as a rebate because of the project, and that's why we want to apply those rebates to the cost of the school, as opposed to telling people, we're going to take the rebates, put them in our pocket, and then tax you for it.
And you went up to the 78 because the final cost project was 278.
Right, it was kind of a rounding thing. It left 200,000 on the table for borrowing purposes.
Okay.
There's, Debbie, in the explanation, the word two is spelled CO instead of TO, the very bottom line of that. Appropriate funds in the fall to cover the.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Article six?
Well, I move to adopt article six for the sum of $75,000 for the mandated triennial, triannual update of all properties.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on article six? All in favor? Article seven?
I want to make a change on that, but I move to adopt article seven for transfer the available funds of $50,000 to develop a fair and equitable stormwater utility fee.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion?
What did you change?
Well, not what I was going to say. I didn't change it, because I thought I should do it during the discussion, so that's why I threw it in. Instead of just doing the stormwater utility fee, one of the things that we might, I don't want the money to be tied up just in the enterprise fund, because don't we need to look at regional watershed areas and developing a regional watershed with East Long Meadow? That won't save us money. Or we don't need the money for it to do that?
We get our water from Springfield. I don't know what you mean by regional watershed.
Well, watershed, you look at where the drainage is going, in the stormwater drainage, and you look at the tributaries that are going into the Connecticut River, and with the new MSP.
MS4, but the permit gets issued to us, so we have to resolve our own issue. And this will help identify what we need to do to set up a stormwater enterprise fund, so the costs associated with managing our stormwater would be encapsulated by the enterprise fund, and then the town could assess a charge.
Oh, I understand that.
To help offset that based on different scenarios that they'll present. And this is something, you know, we've gone to some trainings on it. I do think this is like, you know, OPEB studies four years ago, where there was one or two, and now there's 40 or 50. I think this is going in that same direction, and I'll be candid, the prop, the tax, this could be, also help relieve the issue with the tax levy, partially.
And I'll be candid, and that's one of the reasons I don't think this is appropriate. I think that moving from taxes to fees is a road down, which I don't want to go, whether it's stormwaters, or trash, or any other reason. You know, if, you know, if it was to study, you know, how to deal with stormwater, how to be in compliance, but the establishment of a stormwater utility fee, to me is, we're going to start raising fees in town, and for that reason, I don't support this. I also will comment that it seems that $50,000 is the number of the night. I don't know where that came from. Do we get bids? Do we get estimates that that's what it's going to take to do this? Or, you know, why did we come up with $50,000 when we're, you know, arguing with the school?
To be honest with you, the city of Lancaster, Wisconsin, spent $50,000 to develop their stormwater utility. I think we've been to trainings, and I know that there are, you know, there's been different ranges presented on what it will cost the municipality. We want to be able to get it all done in one fell swoop. I do think that's probably more than we should need for the stage that we're going to be at. And I don't think that this is, doing this isn't going to implement it. Doing this is the same thing as planning. It just says, here's what it'll look like, here's what it would cost residents, and here's the structure that will work best for Long Meadow. And if the board decides, or town meeting decides not to go forward with the bylaw changes that would be needed, then it doesn't go. But at least we'll know what we're not doing. So that's why, this is just a study.
Yeah, our vote's one way or the other, it'd be on the town floor.
Right. Because it would be a bylaw. I mean, it would be implemented via bylaw, so we're, again, this is not a committal to a enterprise fund.
Yeah, I just, and I don't know how you do this, Stephen, but it's almost, we get a straw vote, if people are in favor of this, before we go spend $50,000 on developing the details. But on the other hand, say, do you want some details before you take the straw vote? And I understand it's a.
But if we presented the straw vote as, we're going to have to comply with this MS4 permit issue that's going to be costly, and do you want to not have any additional revenue source to help offset those additional costs? I think people would say, yeah, geez, if there's a way we can generate additional revenue to help offset these costs, so we're not, you know, shedding services to comply with this federal mandate, there may be more support for that. That's all, we may never get there, Mark. I think we're just saying, let's see what it takes.
I understand that, and I also understand the implication of people who don't pay taxes could be asked to pay stormwater utility fees, where people, you know, and that spreads the, we have a lot of non-tax, taxpaying entities in town that could pay these fees, and I get that, so.
And you're going to the pie, and now there's another huge chunk of something that's eaten to the pie. There's not enough left.
Philosophically, I have this thing about fees, you know. Charge me what you're going to charge me. Don't nickel and dime me.
And I think my request could maybe take in, or take any other action there relative thereto, because I still say the regional watershed.
But to take any other action relative thereto gets dropped out in the actual motion. That's just a warrant article, because it allows you some flexibility. But when we get up to stand to give the motion, we're going to say, to developing fair and equitable stormwater utility fee, period. That's what the motion will be.
Yeah, no, that's right. Because it allows you to amend the motion.
Allows you to, a little bit of flexibility what you read on town floor, as long as it has the same, you know, the moderator judges that the intent of the article is the same, right?
I don't, I know in the discussions, I haven't heard anybody talk about regional watershed. Certainly the Bay State Road thing, where nobody kind of talked, I don't know where that's coming from. But I know, I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and say, let's wait for another town to be ready before we take action on our stormwater. But that's essentially, when you say a regional approach, that means the other partners have to be ready to move forward.
Okay. I'll bring you material on it, and it's, there's savings, but I would go ahead with this, but I would say stormwater enterprise fund. Is that the change you wanted to make?
I don't know if one's more accurate than the other.
I think to develop that stormwater fee is going to become a part of the enterprise fund. I'm kind of comfortable where it is. One's going to follow the other.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, we had that discussion about this stormwater utility, and, you know, I think this is a situation where you can kind of decide in principle whether you think it's a good idea or not. I mean, frankly, I'd love to take that $50,000 and spend it on something I know has value, because we certainly have lots of those things. And, you know, parenthetically, I'll note, I think this is going to be wildly unpopular. You remember the last town meeting where, I can't remember, Kurt Friedman was talking about the water rates, and the select board needs to be constrained from doing evil with water rates? This is like, you know, this would, this is sort of that discussion on steroids. So, I think it's, I don't think it's a good idea to be pushing this.
You know, the other thing is to say, to assist the town in developing, we're really not developing, we're investigating the development. So.
I just think that if we hire consulting services, I mean, the consultants are going to tell us how to make this thing happen. I mean, they're not going to waste their time. It's not possible. I mean, I just don't see how, it really does sort of set us on a path. I mean, I think, you invest $50,000, and they're going to come up with some great brochures and presentations and everything, saying that this is the golden ticket, you know, we're going to get a lot of money. And so, I think, you know, you know, I think you're right, voters are going to question this, and I think that we're.
On the other hand, though, if it said to investigate how the town can reassure compliance with federal, upcoming federal standards, everybody's going to say, I get it. Which is, I think, what we want to do. And for me, that's the difference between voting against this, is we're setting, we're setting on the path to a stormwater utility, you know, structure, as opposed to, we've got to figure out the best way to get in compliance with these federal standards that are coming down the pipe.
Do we want to change the warrant article, then, to say, to developing a fair and equitable stormwater utility fee to help the town comply with pending federal stormwater regulations?
I don't even think it's to develop a fair and equitable stormwater utility fee. It's just, just to figure out how to be in compliance, what we need to do.
There will be implementation costs for MS4.
And I understand that. And that's what I'm saying. We need to be in compliance with that, you know, as a town. And I don't know how to do that, and I think we're saying, there's a bunch of options. Let's have, let's get somebody in here who's an expert on it to tell us what our options are. And if one of them is create a stormwater utility fee and a stormwater utility, you know, enterprise fund, that's fine. If there's, and maybe they come back with a couple of ways, but they've got to tell us how we can be in compliance. And to me, we've got a lot more probability of getting this past the town meeting to say, we're investing this money to assure compliance in a timely manner with federal standards, is better than we're investing this money because we want to tax you folks, or fee you folks. It may be semantics, but.
Well, I, sorry, go ahead.
I think, I think that makes sense, because we need to figure out what our costs are going to be, and consulting to assist the town in preparing for the liabilities and expenses.
I guess, I hear what you guys are saying, and I think we both, I think Paul and I know it's not going to be popular. It's, you know, it's going to be called the rain tax. It's because that's what they call it everywhere that this thing gets proposed. But what I'm trying to convey is, and I guess, Mark, I think your approach, though, is not exactly truth in advertising, because we are going to need, for the same reasons we've been talking about for weeks, we're going to need additional ways of funding these increased costs. And even if, you know, I think it's important, and I always feel this way, to, if we know that a stormwater utility fee is going to be a needed part of funding our compliance with the MS4 regulations, then we should say that now, and give the town the chance to get themselves informed. Maybe it fails this time, maybe, but then we engage the community, and we get the second time around. But I, I don't like proposing, you know, fees and taxes. I know it's going to be unpopular, but I'll speak for myself, but I know, I'm pretty confident I speak for Paul. We believe this is needed for the town.
I'd like to move us along, because we've got a lot more articles to go through, and we're just repeating our debate here at this point, so.
Yeah, I mean, we don't need to debate the article.
The key is, do we want to rewrite it or not?
I, I think you could still say, to assist the town, it says, the way you say, the purpose of consulting, to assist the town in developing a fair and equitable, it means that we're going to develop one. And we really haven't agreed that we're going to get a utility fee. And I'm the one who's been on the bandwagon about this for two years now. So I would say to assist the town in investigating a fair and equitable, rather than developing. Because you need to get the materials and the information, and then what happens is we roll it out in a series of public forums, and then people decide the public forums, and then it's voted in on the fall. So I would say, instead of developing, investigating the development of a storm utility enterprise fund. That's the way I would put it.
So you'd add word, language saying investigate the development?
Yeah.
And in the description of the article, it does mention, meaning to meet federal and state standards, so that is in there.
Did you get that amendment, then?
Changes the word, deletes the word developing and replaces it with the word investigative.
Investigating the development.
It's investigating the development of a fair and equitable stormwater, I would say, enterprise fund, not utility fee, because there's so much more involved with it, because there's mitigation issues that you can do, so people sometimes don't even have to pay the fee if they've mitigated their own property.
So now, what did you want the Indian to read, then? You were going to change stormwater utility fee to read what?
Stormwater enterprise fund.
Okay. Okay, I guess you offered that as an amendment, or?
I need a second on the amendment.
Yeah, I'll second. Is there any discussion on the amendments? Stephen, do you have any input?
I don't know. It feels like obfuscation. I mean, you know, the fee, at least people understood what we were proposing.
Well, because it's more than a fee. It's a whole program, enterprise funds are. And what, and once those are rolled out, people will understand. So let's say their fee's going to be $50 a year, but if they put in certain plantings near the drainage project, then they don't even pay the $50. They plant certain trees, there's certain levels of mitigation that people can do. So that's why I say it's more of a program. You could even say enterprise fund program. If you say utility fee, then everyone thinks, oh, well, we're all going to get equally onto. And it's really more complicated than that.
Well, I think it's, if people get a utility fee, and it would just be, I'm going to get charged this fee, and then the money's going to go, they'll go god knows where for whatever they want.
Down the drain.
But saying it's an enterprise fund, they get assessed a charge, but it's specifically for the purposes related to stormwater management. And that's why, it's not like a fee that just goes into the general fund, it's a fee that gets dedicated towards a specific enterprise, like water and sewer fees. So that's why I felt, you know, that we should clarify that.
Okay, one up, any other discussion?
Yeah, we're getting back to the concern I have, that this becomes tantamount to saying, well, even, you know, you've adopted this, so you've accepted the enterprise fund. And even though what we're saying, we haven't, it seems to me that we should put in here that would need to be developed, approved at a future town meeting.
Well, it says investigate the developing.
No, it said investigating and developing.
What you're saying, in the, in the description on the bottom, we'd say, a vote will be in a future town meeting?
Descriptions don't mean anything. It's got to be, I mean, the word, I don't know, the wording I have says that for the purpose of consulting services to assist the town in investigating and developing a fair and equitable.
No, investigating a development. So it's not developing, investigating a development of a fair and equitable stormwater enterprise fund, to be voted on in a future. of a fair and equitable stormwater enterprise fund, to be voted on in a future town meeting.
Yeah.
Is that what you wanted?
Right.
In the main thing?
Okay.
So that would be my full amendment.
Okay. That was an amendment to the original motion?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Okay.
And the original?
The original motion was, as written, except for the modifications made by amendment.
Can we just, can we just read the whole thing now?
You can.
To see if the town will transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $50,000, greater or lesser sum, for the purpose of consulting services to assist the town in investigating the development of a fair and equitable stormwater uti- enterprise fund, to be voted on in a future town meeting.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, Article 8.
Here's your mark.
Yeah, I, I, Paul, are these the numbers that it's gonna be now?
These are the numbers, and use the $100,000 in free cash.
I move we adopt Article 8 for the warrant, which is the budget.
Second.
And is the $100,000 in free cash a separate article?
No, it's actually, it's built into the body underneath the numbers, Alex.
Yeah, it says $100,000 from available fund.
The third line.
I, I got it.
Any more discussion on this? We discussed this one pretty heavily before. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, Article, what is it, 9?
Article 9 is, is our capital projects, I move we adopt Article 9 as listed here.
As written.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I do, so, Paul, the difference between the $1,466,000 and what we have on the sheet for capital, which is, uh... 1.526, is that the fire truck fund?
Uh, some of it, you, you added, originally you had $75,000 going towards the schools, it was diverted somewhat, so that the raise and appropriate went from that 1,4, I don't have the exact, 1,476, it was up by that 20,500, I think was the difference.
Wait a minute. Alex, there's 28,000, $29,130 that's down below in the multi-fund, that comes out of raise and appropriate, that has to be added to the 1,466?
Yes, we're all raising and appropriating that, yes.
Okay, so that's...
Paul, just split the money we had up into two portions of it.
And then that plus the $31,000 from the capital stabilization fund would equal the $1,526,5.
Right. Following that, Alex, take 1,466,487, add in 21,113, 7,931,000, and that's what we voted on.
That's $1,526,5.
The $31,000 is money that we're funding this with, right?
$31,000 is...
It's only in the capital stabilization fund, but it was part of our capital expenditures.
Right, okay.
Pete, Paul just had to, had to put that toward one item, because it reads better that way.
Got you, okay.
Any other questions?
No. All the numbers are what we're talking about.
Okay, so we're gonna call for a vote, all in favor of placing Article 9 on the warrant? Any opposed?
I just wanna get my water.
Close four to one.
Okay, Article 10.
Okay, Article... Article 10 is...
Sunset. Sunset Lane Water Pains.
Oh, yeah.
Borrowing.
144, 205 to borrow.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move we approve Article, uh, place Article 10 on the warrant.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Four to enough, and Marie stepped up.
Four to enough, and Marie stepped up. Article 11?
I'll move, we place Article 11 on the warrant, which is for, uh, upgrading of water mains in Loop on Branch Street.
Second. Any discussion?
They use title case, when they say water, I'm gonna change it to lowercase, water mains.
Yeah.
That's one of my typos, you told me to do it when we get to the warrant article, so, yeah.
Okay.
They don't, they don't merit title case.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Article 12?
Article 12 is to authorize $141,745 for the installing of siphon on Elmwood Drive, again, this is part of the water plants that's in the water capital, I move we approve to place Article 12 on the warrant.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion on Article 12? All in favor? All opposed? Article 13?
Article 13 is a, our annual acceptance of Chapter 90 money for highway, and we have no idea what the money is, so we had to put in a placeholder at, at the time of town meeting warrant.
Right, we, it should be 484,000 is our normal allotment, but we just don't have the contract for FY17 yet.
All right, so I'm gonna move we approve to place Article 13 on the warrant for Chapter 90 money for road repairs.
Second.
So, so how is it gonna re, are we gonna have that XXX in the thing that goes to the printer?
No, that, that would not be printed, it would be, uh, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the state for highway improvements under authority of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 70, including funds to be received...
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90, I'm sorry, including funds to be received in fiscal year 2017, or any other applicable law.
We've done that in the past, Alex, we've all...
If, if we have the amount, we'll read it in the motion.
We just have to accept the money that the state's giving us.
Right, right.
Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Article 14?
Article 14 is the, is the schools vending machine warrant article we pass every year, so I'll move that we approve Article 14 for placement on the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a standard one-time, it's up here every time. All in favor? All opposed? Article 15?
Article 15 is to raise and appropriate $212,500 for salary settlement account, and this money would go into our future collective bargaining that we know we're gonna have for the current, the upcoming fiscal year, so I'm gonna move that we place Article 15 as written on the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion?
Actually, I do have a question. So, I mean, this is, we're using free cash, right?
No.
No, oh, I'm sorry.
This is in the budget line, this is the budget line.
So, is there an argument to be made for, once we know it, we could do this in the fall town meeting?
Well, one of the, again, people would, would have to wait, should they sign any agreement in the interim, and it creates a lot more work doing a retroactive amount, should somebody sign before the first of the year and have to wait until the fall town meeting, it's a little more administrative work, but... And then we're also bargaining without appropriation. Right, you wouldn't be able to pay them, so even though you have a, an official document signed, you wouldn't be able to pay them until that appropriation was in place.
So, I, I assume we're probably gonna overshoot, I mean, the, the 212,500 overshoots what we're at least hoping to pay, right, I mean, because, I mean, everything...
I would hope not.
What's that?
I said, I would hope not, 'cause I, I said on the other side there, but... But, I'll tell you what, it's, it's based on a 2.5% increase.
Right, right, so you think that's, I mean, 'cause normally we try to overshoot a little bit and then come in under it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Can we batch all the CPC ones together?
Apparently we can't.
No, I mean, for now, I move to accept Article, 'cause we can't really change them, 16, 17...
Well, I, I, let's, we should leave out, though, one of them, 19, and the reason is, Marie, because there's, it's gotta be, the wording's gotta be changed on Article 19.
Okay, so I move to accept Articles 16, 17, and 18 as written.
I'll move 22.
No, I could do 20, and 21, and...
That's it.
Okay.
Wait, I, I do think you should include 19 at this point, because if we're, this is when we're doing the warrant, if it's just a minor language change we think it's going to be, then it's already in.
But I'd just like a separate motion for it, Stephen.
Okay.
We're not, we're not gonna exclude approving Article 19.
Okay.
I'll second the motion, Marie.
Okay.
Any discussion on any of the CPC projects? All in favor?
I, I'd like to, Article 19 is the home, the community residential home modification fund, and I had some emails back and forth with Stephen Weiss, who's the chair of the CPC, and I, I'd like to move that we approve the inclusion of Article 19 to fund the residential home modification fund in the amount of $125,000 with individual grant limits of $10,000, subject to wording that is approved and finalized by the, by CPA and our attorneys, which may tweak the wording, but not the amount of money.
Second.
What does that even mean?
What it means is the wording on this is not correct, if you go back to...
Right, I, I saw the Stephen Weiss thing, and he went at its time.
So I went back, we went back to the 2012 warrant, and I, and, and actually, I'm prepared to, to, to put that into a motion right now, but I think it's, it's not necessarily, whatever everybody wants to do is, is hear this thing, but that's the wording we need, which has a couple of different line...
So you're saying...
If you want to, I can go through it right now, just so you see what it is.
I mean, but he, we're not, I mean, this is a motion to approve language to be determined by Steve Weiss's committee.
It's actually for me, for mine, the motion is to approve the money with language to be determined by the Community Preservation Commission, Committee.
We were kind of offloading our warrant-setting duties to somebody else, I mean, you see, I mean, it's a delegation of power.
We've done that in the past, where we had, the planning board didn't quite have their wording together, and we said, we're, we're gonna go ahead and close the warrant amendments.
Remember that one.
Hopefully to have them done before it goes to press.
So, if you, if you want to, Alex, let me just read it, this is what the article needs to say, it should say, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $100,000, $120,000 from the Community Preservation Housing Reserve to provide additional funds for support of community housing through the Residential Home Modification Fund, and to modify and supplement actions taken pursuant to Article 20 at the May 11, 2010 town meeting, which established the Residential Home Modification Fund as follows, A, funds will only be provided to town residents with income below 80% of HUD median income for Long Meadow, B, funds will only be used for items which meet the definition of housing support provided in CPA funds, C, the committee of at least three individuals will review and approve the applications for funds. Was it four years ago the town approved creation and funding of the, excuse me, six years ago, the town approved creation and funding of the Residential Home Modification Fund, this article would provide additional CPA funds to fund the successful program, applicants may apply for a maximum grant of $10,000 for projects needed to allow them to stay in their homes, the fund is administered by the Council on Aging, applicants will be expected to utilize all other available fund sources before applying for these funds.
I think that $10,000 amount is gonna be modified to $9,999.
Because?
Chapter 30B requirements would then put an additional layer of bidding procedures in. They should just say up to.
Okay, but, Alex, so you can see that it gets a little, and I'm not trying to...
And you think that's what Steve Weiss wants?
Correct, that, no, that's what we need, not what he wants, but that's what we need.
Well, what he thinks we need.
Correct.
Okay, all right, well, that's fine, I mean, to me, that would be an appropriate motion to make, is that what you're making?
So, let me land on a couple of different options, I also talked to Steve about this, and it was based on some feedback you have from CPA Association, I think the way to do it cleanly is to, with a few options, you can make it open-ended, or you can leave it the way it is, and either just have him offer the right language on the floor of town meeting, which is a common practice, or you can leave it the way it is, but in the motion authorize me and Debbie to put in substitute language that is approved by the Community Preservation Commission.
And see, and that's the part that I don't think you can do, because by statute, we have to set the warrant, now, sort of delegating that authority to anybody is inconsistent with our charter and with the statute.
I mean, Stephen, I'd rather put in what Stephen looked at, and say, or, or anything other, you know, or, or any other actions relative thereto, and then let him make on the floor the, the motion, and say, you know, there're gonna be slightly different words, and let him get the exact wording on there.
Well, could we also put in here amounts less than 10,000? 'Cause that's what we're really gonna get to, right? Has to be less than 10,000.
It may, I, I still have a, have a conversation with the procurement officer, but it may be, and I think that would be itemized in any discussion or any explanation that was given, that amount will be itemized, whether it's 10,000 or 9,999.
Yeah.
But, but that will be also part of some written criteria that Amy Sada puts together also, she did send me something this morning, and I just didn't have a chance to review the exact wording that she had.
So where are we sitting?
So, I mean, what's wrong with...
We need to get something passed, I, I'll, I'll offer this, and I'll send, I'll send it to Debbie, just put it in there, and, or put in the, or take any other action thereto, and it'll get us what was done, and let Steve adjust it.
So that's, that's that long thing you just read?
Which is what I understand he...
Okay, all right, that's fine.
You've already read it, though, haven't you?
Yeah, I'm not gonna read it again.
Okay.
So, do I need to second it again? No, we're okay.
I think we've seconded it.
Okay.
If not, go ahead and second.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Just in case procedural is, I know one's second. No other discussion? All in favor?
Debbie, I'll send that to you, okay?
Are we now down to the tree?
22, I think it is.
Oh, we're not 25?
22?
No.
Oh, 20, 25, I move...
22.
22, we adopt the $15, $15 demand fee as written.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second Article 22.
Second, any discussion on that article?
Actually, could somebody tell me what a demand fee is?
If somebody is, is late in payment, there's also basically a surcharge.
Okay.
That, that goes out to them, and there's an additional notice.
So this is on top of the interest?
Yes.
We had passed this as a fee, and then buttoned, Paul said that our town council thought it best be done through a warrant article.
Right, and then the current amount is $5, it's raising the amount from $5 to $15.
All in favor? All opposed? Article 23?
I move to adopt Article 23, to adopt a $30 lien fee for water and a $30 lien fee for sewer as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Did we do 24?
No, well, 24 typographical, there truly are typographical errors in the, in our bylaws, I'm gonna, that the Conservation Commission picked up, and I'm not gonna read it, but it, it literally is a couple of things that, N-O-E-A-S-E-M-E should be stricken to be, to end up saying no, not limited to, and other things like that, so I'm gonna move we adopt Article 24 for placement on the warrant.
Second.
Any discussion on the typos? All in favor? All opposed? 25?
I move we adopt the Tree Warden Recommended General Bylaw Edition.
I'll second. Is there any discussion on the...
I guess, I, I'm just curious, I'm sure we're gonna, why we felt we needed to do this?
There were certain, Peter Benton has been really active in going around seeing how other towns are and what might be missing in our, and he said, we, our bylaws really don't clearly list things, it's, we've been doing it a lot, but we just don't have it in the bylaws, and it was recommended by other organizations that we really need to have stronger bylaws.
So this describes the, the duties of the Tree Warden?
Yeah.
More effectively?
Paul, is there, what number would you recommend for placement of this?
Probably, maybe, before we get into 22, so right after maybe 21, or anywhere, yeah, probably like 21 would be a fine place for it.
Why don't we just go through these, the way they are?
Well, that's citizen petition, we're no discussion on those.
Oh, for the, all the others? Oh, okay.
Yeah, everything's citizens. Everything's citizen petitions.
Well, we have to vote on 25.
Oh, excuse me, yeah, okay. Any more discussion on 25? All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, so, warrant articles 26, 27-
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-nine. Twenty-eight, 29-
Thirty and 31.
Okay.
Are all citizens petitions.
All citizens.
I do make a suggestion, and Alex, it's up to you. What do you think about moving 30 up to be the first citizen petition? If it gets to be super, super light, she can at least be heard. That's, so, I'm recommending just moving one, Article 30, up to be the first citizen's petition.
Who's the petitioner?
I read in the paper, there were two young girls that have worked on this very hard, and I didn't want it to be too late of a night, so can we have it as Article 25, 26?
Can they legally be petitioners?
No, they have a petitioner who's with them, but they will wanna watch the proceedings. And I know we've gone past midnight in the past, so does anyone have any, I don't even know if it needs a motion, but is anyone disagreeing?
Oh, it would definitely need a motion.
Okay. I move that we move, that we make Article 30 Article 26, and everything else would be shifted down.
Oh, you're just talking, shifting in the, within the citizen petition?
Order, I'm just talking about changing order.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll abstain, because-
There's no opposition on that, Marie. I thought you were taking it all the way up to the front.
No, 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 just trying to move it up the citizen's petition.
Any more discussion? All in favor of shifting it from, what is it, 31 to 26?
It's kind of arbitrary.
Okay.
Make it, well, we're saying is we're making it the first citizen's petition against-
First citizen petition.
Yeah, and everything else.
Debbie, I abstain from that one.
Yes.
And Article, Paul, you recommended that we place this article on, on the-
Possible place would be right after Article 21.
Either before or after CPA, or any-
Right, either before or after CPA is probably the right spot.
Would it go before CPA?
Yeah, you could, because that's also some capital things that are before there.
Okay, so which one?
CPA starts at 18, no, CPA starts at 16, so you could also place it, you know, right after 15.
So, this would become 16, then?
Be 16, and everything else would then bump thereafter.
I'm sorry, the tree warden thing?
No.
No, this is-
The one on the-
The warrant on the $50,000.
On $50,000.
The storm sewer-
Oh, Marie's thing.
The storm sewer-
Well, actually, it was Stephen's, but it was my, yeah, I do like it.
Oh, no, this is the Turner field.
The Turner, Turner.
Marie, you wanna read a motion on it?
Read a motion on what?
We've already, we've already, so we're just going for placement.
Oh, you're talking about, you're talking about yours, this one? Oh, I need to read it? Okay, I move that we put on the town warrant-
You gotta move to open the town warrant, and then you gotta move to-
Oh, I moved to open. Oh, no, we have to, now, not-
It should've been opened when we started this meeting.
No.
No.
I opened the town warrant when we started the meeting.
No, you didn't. You can only open it by-
Well, I moved to open the town warrant.
Yeah, open the town, we've been making modifications to a closed warrant.
Yeah.
You can't do that either.
Well, it's the same thing as a vote. I think the principle's the same, once you vote to open it, they all go watch it.
See, this is, this is my point, the absurdity of the open and closing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you can't make modifications to a closed warrant either.
Okay, I moved to open it, so everything can go flying now.
Okay. I'll second the motion. All in favor of opening the warrant? All opposed? Okay. Warrant is open.
I move to add to warrant that the town vote to transfer $50,000 from the prior warrant articles for conceptual site plans and renderings.
As written, or whatever, in position 16.
I'll second it.
Okay. We had a lot of discussion on this, I'm sure the same discussion we have, we have it again, so I'll suspend this discussion and go for the roll. All in favor?
Can I just, is this the way it's going to read? The way it's written here?
That's what we, that's what the final decision, there was no modifications to the wording presented.
Okay.
Okay, Paul, you have, you've looked at the wording. You're in agreement on the wording?
Did you get it?
Yeah, and the $50,000?
Yeah.
Yes.
No problems, you see, on the wording?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, you didn't take the vote.
You gotta take a full vote, because then it kind of was like a half-
There's no vote.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, same board as last time. Insistent. Okay, are there any other changes that we want to make to the warrant before we close?
Are there any other, did anything else come in?
I don't think so. Is anything else received, Debbie? Any other petitions or anything? Okay.
I think we have enough citizens petitions.
Yeah, there was no more, nothing else to do. Yeah, because they would float in now, at that point.
No, I know.
Okay, Mark, you just place a motion, I'll second. Motion is to close the warrant, all in favor? All opposed?
And then, do you need a vote to approve the warrant? Or is that it? Is it all done?
It's done.
Okay, the road closure request for Long Meadow Days, in the parking place?
Sure, I move we approve the road closure of Long Meadow Street in front of the community house for Sunday, May 22, 2016, without a rain date, for Long Meadow Days is approved and with the conditions set forth by the Chief of Police.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? Standard one we have every year. All in favor? All opposed? Paul, before you leave, we'd like to thank you once again for all your work.
He's not going anywhere, what are you talking about?
All the work done. He looked like he was getting up and moving around.
Who knows?
Like I'm gonna take a break from working.
I can't see anything else here that calls for his attention. Reverse, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me have him sit in executive session.
Okay. Okay, the next item, next item up is the LCMAC representative appointment. The only thing we didn't iron out is how we wanted to do this. Do you have suggestions?
What do you mean? What do you mean, iron it out?
How we're gonna make the selection.
Turn in names, or?
Oh, how we're gonna vote on it?
Right, we had three, we had three people to put in for it.
Shouldn't sort of make a motion about who they want on there?
I'll move we approve Steve Morantz as a representative to the LCMAC.
Okay, the only problem that we have with that is that you could vote somebody on, and what about if we get a second one that gets the same vote? Then we gotta do a split. I mean-
Or is it the first that wins?
We got three people. How about, you wanna go down the list, all the way down?
We gotta do the same thing, how many for this person, how many for that person, how many for the-
Yeah, I mean-
So, you mean like 1, 2, 3, like you did on others?
A ranking, like we did last time?
Yeah.
We could do that.
Just say, how many people, 1, 2, or 3, and then the low vote person gets knocked off, and you vote for the next two.
Right, right.
Okay, so we-
You wanna go down through the list?
We hand everything to you, or to?
Or you wanna do it on camera?
What are we, we're passing this-
So, is number one good, or number one bad?
Number one, number one's good.
Okay.
For what it's worth-
What are we doing here?
I don't remember. For what it's worth, having been the LCMAC member and been to the formative meetings, I would recommend Steve Foley. The committee, the mitigation committee really is, you know, not, it's not about, you know, gambling or views on gambling, or whether MGM Springfield is a good thing or a bad thing for a region, it just is, what are the impacts, both locally and regionally, how do we assess those? And I think Steve's experience doing that in the public safety realm, which are two key areas of focus of mitigation, really set him apart from the other two, so, sort of, so my recommendation would be Steve Foley.
Right, because for the record, I didn't think that was in order necessarily, Stephen. I think it was our decision.
Well, yeah, he, no, he was just offering his comments, and I think, go ahead, why don't? Marie, do you have anything to say about any of these applicants?
No, I have my number 1, 2, 3 choice, who do I hand it to?
Okay, do you have any discussion on these applicants?
No, I thought all three of them were excellent, very qualified. I think that we're really not sure what's gonna be needed until they really start getting involved. I thought I, my preference was someone I thought would be a great advocate, but when it comes down to it, I think it was really close, that's why I thought your 1, 2, 3 was a good idea.
Okay, well, we're just, give it a period. Mark, do you have any comments you thought?
I don't know.
Tom?
No, I think we have some good candidates to choose from.
That's good. Alex?
I guess I would say that I think they would all do a good job, and it's, I feel bad that, you know, by this vote, two are gonna feel rejected, but I guess that's the way it is.
Well, I agree, we did get three good apps, but very different qualities on all three of the apps, but bring a different dimension to the table, so. Okay, so why don't we go, we'll proceed and do the 1, 2, 3, we've all got the sheet of paper.
Do we hand them to you, or to Debbie?
No, give them to Debbie.
Oh, Debbie? You get some-
I'm trying to figure out what I'm doing.
We're gonna vote, vote number one for your first, number two for your second, number three for your third choice.
And are we gonna do this by the total of the?
Yeah, same way we did it before, the person with the lowest votes is going over there.
The one with the lowest vote? Yeah, I guess that makes sense, you add up all the ones, you add up all the things.
You 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
Sort of like golf, you know, you want the lowers.
Okay. Well, Debbie's gotta figure out the math.
Yeah, Debbie can do the math, I wish, we're not telling.
Let's see, Tom?
Yeah, you guys gotta sign this.
Get signed, don't get your-
Yeah, I have it with my, on my side.
Are we missing somebody's?
Yeah, mine. Richard, I just think, I'll just say for the record, I think that this 1, 2, 3 is, I'm not sure it's the best way to do this, you know, what we ought to do is drop out, find out who most of the people want, drop out the bottom person, and then we vote, because-
Well, we might, because we might end up with a tie.
Yeah.
Well, you might end up with a tie, but you might also end up with, you know, scenarios, 1, 1, 1, 3 is the same as a bunch of 2, I'm just saying, it's, statistically, it's not a good way to do it, that's all.
So, is this like the convention? I was watching Lincoln Douglas.
Well, I mean, there's different, I mean, there's different ways you can do it. You can do where a top, being ranked number one's worth one point, being ranked number two's worth a half, and being ranked third is zero, or, I mean, is, but you're gonna get to the same place, because there is someone who has a majority of the support for the number one thing, so, you know, we could spend all night crunching numbers, or we could just say-
Just tally.
And we want Debbie to verify the vote.
Attention, Bill.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, Ernst, it's a, yeah.
Well, maybe a little slow. For people watching, the audience may be getting slow, the tension builds, and I'm sure that people at the edge of their chairs.
Yeah, folks, we're only, actually, we're getting, we don't have, this is our last open agenda item, then we're gonna be going into executive session.
So, we don't need to do anything with recycling?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
None of that. And then, after we have executive session, we are going to return to open session, so.
These are just number one votes.
Snack and come back to the TV and watch us for open session.
Yeah, right, that's gonna happen.
Do the, Election Central have the results?
So, three people had Steve Foley as their first choice, two people had Steve Morantz as their first choice.
I thought there was only five on the board.
No, as their first choice.
I think who has the vote total, though.
Yeah, but, but we said we were gonna do it by total, so it's, how many, you know, what's the sum of the votes? That's what he said the process was.
The sum of the votes for the top-ranked candidate.
So, you add everybody's number, and the lowest number. Isn't that what, Alex?
And make a matrix.
The lowest.
Got it. Okay, minimum 1, 1, 2.
It's just like, it's just like all the, all the people out there changing their political parties for reasons.
But then, of course, someone who wants someone, then, will add a 3 to somebody else.
Oh, yeah, well, you reverse your order.
I didn't even think that.
That's why this system stinks.
Oh, that's why Mark spent a little time thinking about what he was doing.
I have my calculator option.
Ready to get statisticalized?
Took my abacus.
Yeah.
So, Richard, are we doing this recycling thing?
No.
No.
No, it's not gonna be on, it was accidentally put on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I tell you what, yeah, we don't have any other business, so we're waiting on this. I tell you what we can do, we can announce this, do you want to, no, Debbie's gotta go into executive with us, too, so.